Good evening. We're ready to begin this Plan Commission meeting's call to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Chair Moody, Vice Chair Slugman.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flankis.
Here.
Commissioner Trobridge.
Here.
Commissioner Creer.
Here.
Commissioner Cherry.
Here.
Thank you.
I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the pill and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Moving on to item four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, any speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made underneath this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Sir, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bill Spaziletti. I live at 46 Shadow Lane. I'd like to read a... This is a... My concern is the additional apartments on Rancho Verity Apartments. There's a letter that was written to the Department of Planning, March 23rd.
Mr. Vice Chair, is that an agenda item?
Yes, sir. Is that an agenda item, an item that's on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, it's a variance... Or a zoning, what do you call it? Z O N 63938.
If we could ask you to come up whenever we call that item.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll have an open public comment and have you present at that time.
Okay, apologize.
Hey, no problem. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Alan Peace. I live at 2411 Granis Avenue. I'd like to speak about Agenda 57, about the future academy that the gentleman that's going to be operating this.
Okay, perfect. Alan, when we come up to that agenda item, we'll call you back up and we'll open up public discussion, let you speak on that item at that point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now moving on to item five, for possible action to approve the final minutes for the Plan Commission meeting of May 10th, 2016. May I have a motion? Can I get that with the microphone on, please? I make a motion to approve. Motion's on the floor to approve. Please cast your vote.
I will be abstaining, as I missed last meeting.
Motion carries, noting the extension of Commissioner Quinn. Moving on to item number six, housekeeping items. Are there any commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public that would like to pull forward an item for action? Staff?
Good evening. The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the July 12th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 13, SUP 64491. Item number 16, VAC 64290. Items 25, 26, and 27, VAR 63584, WVR 63585, and TMP 63586 has been requested to be held in abeyance to address neighborhood concerns, and as this is the third, abeyance request, the Planning Commission will have to make a finding. Items 28, 29, 30, VAR 63577, WVR 63579, and TMP 63580. The applicant has requested to hold this in abeyance to the July 12th meeting to address the neighbors' concerns. This is also the third request for this project, and the Planning Commission will have to make a finding. Items 31, 32, and 33, VAR 63587, WVR 68588, TMP 63589. This is the third request for this particular project as well. The applicant has requested the abeyance to address neighborhood concerns, and the Planning Commission will need to make a finding. And lastly, item 68, TXT 64667.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Order. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding item 13 and 16, 25, 26, 27, and then it's 31, 32, and 33, and 68, those would all be a motion for approval to hold it. But regarding item 28, 29, and 30, is there anybody here representing that application?
Can I help you?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to obey items 13, 16, and 68 to the July 12th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. And then regarding...
You've got to call them up.
You have to call them up.
Is the applicant here that represents items 25 through 27, 28 through 30, and 31 through 33? If so, please come forward.
Mr. Vice Chair, was the staff given any kind of reasoning from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, we received an abeyance request from the property owner stating that they would need additional time to address neighborhood concerns and to work with the neighbors.
We may want to see if there's someone in the audience who'd like to speak on those items.
Sir, please come forward. And if I can get your name and address for the record.
Mark Christensen, 6817 Unicorn Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89131. I'm addressing items 25, 26, and 27, and 28.
But not 29, 30, 31, 32, 33?
No.
Okay.
This is the third time now that we've been inconvenienced by coming down here. The representative in this case, D.R. Horton, held one neighborhood meeting to which D.R. Horton did not show up. They sent their law firm and an attorney. And at that point in time, the opening statement was, "Thank you for attending my meeting." So the reason I'm up here today and not 60 other individuals who are exceptionally impacted by this is three of the individuals are out of state. Bouncing back and forth from their jobs has cost them tremendously as a disabled veteran on a fixed income. D.R. Horton needs to address this issue, or the property owners need to address this issue and do it promptly. This is the third time now that we've been in on this in front of the Commission, and I have...
Well, sir, just to let you know, D.R. Horton has pulled out of this particular project, and so I think that's the reason why this is being held in advance. You know, so at this time, I'm not...
I guess if the property owner's not here, we may give him an opportunity to have either find another representative or make this the last time that you're going to hold this and make sure that the applicant knows that you're going to hear it on the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. The D.R. Horton, just for clarification, and how are you, sir?
I'm good, thanks. Apparently, they've withdrawn their support of the project and are no longer involved, so the property owner's on his own on this one.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate that. Incidentally, the city attorney and I have had a running conversation on the R1 versus RE factor for the property at the end of Unicorn, at the intersection of Unicorn and Darrell. It has since been cleared up, however, comma. It's still up for discussion.
Sir, this is just about holding the item in advance or not, and so we can't go into all the details on this particular item at this juncture. So, I mean, at this time, I think we...
If you've determined, Mr. Chairman, that the fact that the prior applicant has withdrawn his support and this property owner's now on his own, he had that opportunity, I don't think, to meet with the neighbors. I don't know if the property owner was involved in those other meetings. You could find that to be good cause and make this the last time that you hold it.
Yeah. So that's 25, 67.
Do we... Can we get a motion?
My motion would be to hold 25, 26, 27 one more time, just so that the new owner or builder can meet with us here. And if he doesn't show up again, then that city's out, so we'll have to start over. Is that all right?
Motion's on the floor.
At least to hold it one more month.
Okay. Motion's to hold the item for 30 days until the...
July 14th, July 12th meeting.
July 12th.
Excuse me, Vice Chair, is that 24 through 28? 25?
It's 25 through 33.
Through 33.
And I'm assuming it's the same rationale for all of those properties, Tom? Okay.
Yes, Tom. Mr. Perrigo.
And staff will contact the applicant and let him know this is going to be the final
time.
So this... So the motion is to hold it for one more month. That's it. And then if he doesn't come, then we'll have to start over.
There's a motion on the floor to hold items 25 through 33.
May I ask a question? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question.
Commissioner.
Has anybody spoken to the applicant? Are we just sort of guessing?
No, this is in the backup. D.R. Horton has specifically submitted a letter stating that they're withdrawing their application.
But I'm saying that the applicant, not D.R. Horton, though, has he communicated with staff? Have you been in communications with him?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We did receive an email today from the owner's representative that...
For the abeyance.
Requested the abeyance, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair, there's one more gentleman. I didn't know if he wanted to speak.
Yes, Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Michael Adams, 6875 Unicorn Street. Just want to bring up and request, is it now official that D.R. Horton has pulled out of this project, that they are done?
According to the letter in the backup, on all these applications that I read, they have officially pulled out.
Thank you. The reason why I'm asking the question is this is not just a battle for these three pieces of property. This is also a continuation of the battle that we had last year with the property that is on Deer Springs and Tom that we were dealing with. Same owner, same target on his actions. So far, the only meetings that we have had have been with attorneys that in turn have basically tried to make us happy that he was giving us what we already have. We are not opposed to development of this property. We would just like it to be done correctly and in regards to the R and P. That's our only request in the thing of the neighborhood. But I'm one of the people that had to fly in for this, so I understand that this is their business, they're paid for it, it doesn't matter. But we have other businesses, and this is starting to cost us tremendously. So we're about at the point where we're starting to, as a neighborhood, to get our own legal representation to go against him. That's our next step. Because from what this has caused, myself, Mr. Christensen, and about a half dozen other people in the neighborhood who are either professional business owners, doctors, et cetera, et cetera, it would actually be cheaper at this point for us to hire an attorney to battle him with. So that's my only statement, and I'm one... I'm basically the neighborhood contact representative. We all kind of divided ourselves into different duties. But that was the only statement that I wanted to get on record, was the fact that it's not that we're just adamantly saying, "No, we want nothing." We are trying to work with the builder to say, "Please do this correctly," and so far all they've done is thrown attorneys at us. And it's the same situation we had last year with the Tom at Deer Springs.
I appreciate that. And if you go to LasVegasNevada.gov and type in city clerk...
Yes, sir.
Then medians and agenda will pop up on the screen if you scroll down. From there, you can go to this meeting, Plan Commission, look at the agenda, click on support and documentation, and then it'll give you... It'll give you the applicant's information, the owner's information, the letters with them withdrawing, and all of that. So take a look at that. I know that that's a... You can watch Monday at 10:00 a.m. to hear the... All the links that you have to hit to get to it. But anyways, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quinn, can we... Can you please... I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and can I get your motion?
So my motion is to hold for the final time items 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33. Is that correct?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Trobridge.
I'm going to vote in support of the motion, but I would like to make sure that staff notifies the new owner that he's walking into a situation that has been going on for some time, and this extension is for one meeting only. Just they need to know very clearly that they're walking into something, they have to take action. I'm getting tired.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Now moving on to the consent agenda items. Consent items are considered routine by the Plan Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Just note to the public, these items are not required to be written to the record. May we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval on the one motion, one vote. Item number 11, SCD 6... What?
Seven through 10.
Consent items. 11... What? Items number seven through 10. Motion for approval.
And I just want to make note that I'll be abstaining on item number seven, as I have an ongoing business relationship with that individual. Motion's on the floor for approval of the consent agenda items, seven through 10. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Moving on to the one motion, one vote items. The following items are... May be considered in a one motion, one vote. They're considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Plan Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request that item to be removed from this part of the agenda. Starting with item number 11, SCD 64471. Applicant Khalida Residential LLC. Owner Hans Interest LP. For possible action on a request for a major deviation of the Summerland Development Standards to allow 218 parking spaces where 261 parking spaces are required for a proposed special care facility and assisted living apartments at the north corner of Desert Crossson Court and Center Crossson Road, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, SUP 64268. Applicant The Butcher Block. Owner Monaco Properties LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on and off sale establishment use within an existing 3,241 square foot restaurant and general retail store at 6440 North Durango Drive, Suite 125, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, SUP 64491. Applicant Glenn Rubin. Owner Douglas BK's et al. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 9,450 square foot motorcycle, motor scooter sales use within...
That one was abid.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me... That one was abid. SDR 64218. Applicant owner Las Vegas ICE LLC. For possible action on a request for a major amendment of an improved site development plan review, SDR 41601. For a waiver of the downtown centennial plan streetscape standards to remove required palm trees and replace the shrubs or shade trees and an improved office development at 501 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item number 15, VAC 64120. Owner Applicant City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of Moonlight Drive north of Charleston, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. And item 17, VAC 643994. Applicant owner William Line Homes, Inc. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a 60-foot wide public drainage segment generally located west of Coke Street, south of Alder Glen Avenue, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public discussion and turn this over to the Plan Commission.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
On the one motion, one vote. I make a motion for approval of number 11, 12, 14, and 15, and 17, excluding number 13 and 16, as they are being held in abeyance. Thank you.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, on the consent items seven... I'm sorry. Item seven is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days. Items eight, nine, and 10 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within seven days on the one motion, one vote. Items 11, 12, and 17 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days. Items 14 and 15 will be heard at the city council meeting on July 20th.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing items, starting with item number 18, or relating items, 18 through 24. Item number 18, abeyance GPA 63571. Applicant owner John M. Bailey. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to GC General Commercial at 5455 North Rainbow Boulevard, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Number 19, abeyance Z O N 63573. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE Residential Estates to C2 General Commercial, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Item number 20, abeyance VAR 63817. For possible action on a request for variance to allow a 13-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required for an existing building and to allow a 5-foot side yard setback on the north perimeter where 10 feet is required for a proposed carport, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Item number 21, abeyance VAR 63891. For possible action on a request for variance to allow a 17-foot residential adjacency setback where 60 feet is required for an existing building, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Item number 22, abeyance SUP 63574. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for delivery and service vehicle storage use, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Item number 23, SUP 64653. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a building maintenance service and sales use with outside storage, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. And finally, item number 24, abeyance SDR 63575. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 3,933 square foot office and service vehicle use with waivers to allow a 0-foot wide landscape buffer along a portion of the north perimeter and a 5-foot wide landscape buffer along a portion of the south perimeter where a minimum of 8-foot wide landscape buffers are required, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, prior to the staff report, I will be abstaining on these items, as my law firm rendered legal services for the applicant's representative, and I have abstained on these matters twice previously.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's representative at the previous meeting held that the proposed use was a building maintenance service and sales use and would allow for the utilization of the rear of the property as outdoor storage. At the direction of the Planning Commission, staff has processed a special use permit application for the building maintenance service and sales. Staff agrees with the assessment that the primary use is indeed building service, building maintenance service and sales, but is in disagreement with the assertion that the storage of a fleet of street sweepers is in accordance with the intent of outdoor storage. Unified Development Code differentiates the two by providing a clear definition of delivery and service vehicle storage as the use of an area or facility for the parking and storage of commercial fleet vehicles that are primarily in connection with the delivery of goods and services to the surrounding community. That being said, the proliferation of commercial uses along Rainbow will discourage property owners to the south to develop in a residential manner and encourage the conversion of the character of the neighborhood into a commercial corridor. The proposed amendment to the general plan and subsequent rezoning of the property to general commercial are not compatible with either the residential estate properties within the rural preservation overlay or the single-family developments that are adjacent to the subject site. The proposed variances, requests, and associated waivers on the landscape buffer requirements cannot be supported, as well as the intensity of the proposed use itself being incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff recommends denial of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Chairman Commissioners, George Garcia, 1055 Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite 210. Pleasure to be before you. We've been on this item before, and I think we've advanced to the point where the building maintenance, sales, and service is in appropriate use, and we are requesting a general plan amendment for service commercial, a zone change for C1. And as you know, the property to the immediate north, and if we can go to the overhead, we can point specifically to where that is located. The property to the immediate north at Anne and Rainbow was recently rezoned for a convenience store and with drive-throughs, car wash, and that is basically in part what has brought my client here, Mr. John Bailey. If you'll introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. John Bailey, 5455 North Rainbow. Thank you.
Who's resided at this property for 20 years. He and his family have resided here. Mr. Bailey, basically, in light of the changed characters, when he came out here, the character and condition of the neighborhood was very rural, very undeveloped. Over time, as you can see in the photo, we now have a well-developed area that's no longer rural in character. We have typical subdivisions. We have major arterials at Anne and Rainbow. They're now fully improved and we're, of course, close to the 95. So access to the regional surface streets has changed the character along with as development has occurred. And the most recent change, as I said, was this project to the immediate north. Mr. Bailey's property is here. This is Rainbow. Here's Anne. Here's the convenience store. Here's the canopy. Here's the existing residential to the east. Here's the fast food, and you can see the drive-through right along the northern boundary of the property. Mr. Bailey is seeking, basically, to, in light of this, create a use for his business, and his business is providing a street sweeper or sweeping services for, like HOAs or for property owners of small commercial centers. And what he does is provide, basically, a service for those that use a small street sweeper, not the type that the city uses for its vehicles. So they're here. You can see the types of trucks they are. These do not require a commercial driver's license. They don't require the special training and certification that a driver for, say, a large city vehicle would require. And the proposed use here would be, then, to convert the existing residence that you saw and leave it as it is, basically, other than to convert on the exterior, convert it on the interior to meet commercial building codes and make it into an office. The office would be very low in terms of nature, in terms of the number of trips per day that would occur there, because this is a service business, not a... not a retail business. So, as we transition from the intense commercial to the north, to this property, we keep, we transition both in terms of a lower intensity use, the hours of operation, the amount of trips. We also have a lower intensity in terms of the, sort of, the appearance of it. We're basically going to maintain that residential look and feel and not make it into a commercial building. One of the key tests, I think, for compatibility is what do your neighbors think? And as you know, we, as we indicated previously, we've met with the neighbors. Here, you can see, and unlike the project before on the north, the number of people who were concerned about this at the neighborhood meeting, we had, this is the sign-in sheet for the neighborhood meeting, and then I have for the record that I've basically turned in previously, five parties who signed, basically, a questionnaire. And the first one is, this is a great addition to our neighborhood and would be compatible. The second one, this is a great addition, will be compatible. The third one, this is acceptable project that I can live with. All, and then one more that says this is an acceptable project I can live with. All four of those on their budding street, residential street to the east, which is Bridges Street, which, basically, if you go back here to the aerial, Gemini Bridges is this street to the immediate east. Those four budding property owners have all said they are in support or can live with the project. We also have Richard Solerno on Anne Road, who also said this is an acceptable project I can live with. And I don't know if Keith Kletus is in, is in the audience tonight, but he's attended prior meetings, and he also indicated that, under the right circumstances and conditions, he, on behalf of his association, would be supportive as well, and we think we've met that test. I would offer, for the record, the conditions for your consideration that would be, we think would be appropriate and warranted, which would, basically, help to make sure that, going forward in the future, that the nature and character of what we're proposing here is not dramatically altered, such that the type of vehicles that we proposed cannot exceed 15,000 gross vehicle weight, for example. And I can show you what a typical, and I showed you the other project at Craig and Rainbow, that staff said where that truck was not in compliance. That truck is an F-800 with a bucket. I can show you that vehicle weighs probably in excess of 20,000 pounds. So, very clearly, our goal is to eliminate that type of large vehicle by limiting the gross vehicle weight. We're also suggesting no commercial driver's license. Again, that's an indication that you cannot have that type of large vehicle, construction-type vehicles of that nature and kind on the property as well. So, what we proposed is a set of conditions to help ensure that what we're talking about is carried forward and maintained in the future and allow Mr. Bailey to, basically, be a good neighbor, who his neighbors, basically, as we, before we even went to the neighborhood meeting, we went out and talked to people, and you can see the results through the neighborhood meeting and the surveys, that they believe that this is a good project and a good fit for their neighbors and not something that they are, they fear and concerned about. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And, basically, one closing thing on the variances. All the variances are, basically, really in compliance with the, with the existing house, with one exception landscaping up against the commercial to the north.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Keith Kletus, 6604 Manzanita Glen, President of the Timber Creek Neighborhood Association. And yes, the changes or proposals that the applicant suggests today, limiting it to C1, other proposed restrictions of commercial driver's license weights, et cetera, our neighborhood now does fully support. We could support this project even with all the waivers. We feel that we would rather have a commercial project that looks and feels like a house than have it torn down and come in with a strip mall or another drive-through that meets all the setback requirements, but would bring a lot more people and loudspeakers to that area. So, as you deliberate, we would just ask that you keep that in mind, whatever conditions or restrictions you see fit to help keep that property with the C1 zoning looking like a residential property.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open this up to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions. So, Mr. Bailey, how many trucks will be parked at one time on this site? Like, when the day is over, how many trucks will you have on this site?
At the most, right now, there's a dozen.
A dozen?
Yeah.
And what time do they start leaving? Like, in the morning? Is it, like, 6:00 AM or 7:00?
Not quite that early, no. We have several shifts, so they're pretty much out in the field.
Okay. And then they stagger back in late afternoon?
Yeah. So, the most of it, there's a day shift. They're done by 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon.
Okay.
Then the evening shift starts around 8:00 o'clock at night, and they're back by 7:00 in the morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Commissioner.
I have a question for you. So, if the build, if the business is sold, then, are you move the building, are you move the business, there's still a general commercial zoning on that property, correct?
Yes.
That's a, maybe, question for staff, correct? Or does the zoning go with the business?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The zoning would stay with the property regardless of the business is moving or not. But I believe, if I heard, the applicant has requested to amend their request to service commercial and C1 in light of the building maintenance service and sales use.
Right. I said general, you're right. Correct. But with that, that C1 still stays with that?
That is correct.
So, um, there's, because I would hate for this to get approved, and I'm not saying you would do this, but someone could come along and offer you, you know, $2 million or something for that property or whatever it is.
I wish that I'd done it already. We wouldn't be standing.
Right. And then, but with the zoning, though, the zoning now makes it more valuable than with the residential. You've, you've fought, you, you've done all the groundwork to get it to where it is, where it could be, and then someone comes along and says, hey, I want that property, and turns into something else. Now, so, I'm kind of torn between, because I would hate the neighbors to get stuck with something. Neighbor just came up and said, we like this because of the fact that it looks like a home, it feels good, it conforms.
Now, just a quick, would that apply, like, if that ever did come up in the future, that future owner, wouldn't he have to get that permission to do what he needed to do there?
Well, the zoning would be C1 on the property.
Now, doesn't...
Now, the operator business, I imagine, depending on what that business is, then, if there's a business that falls with under that C1 category, then they can do whatever they want to there. Correct?
And I think, Mr. Chairman, that's why, through you, we, basically, have offered the additional conditions to try to help further restrict the property. And in fact, and the fact is, Mr. Bailey is a good, has been a neighbor here and wants to re, stay as a neighbor now as a business person. And so, those conditions are offered to, basically, to help protect the neighbor, the neighbors that he has known for many, many years.
Right. And I'm not saying that, but he's a good guy. Someone, I own a business, someone came along and offered you the money for your business, you got to do what you got to do. You got to feed your family.
Well, I think if somebody bought my business, and it's the same business there.
Right. But the zoning is, is now from residential to C1. It's a big difference. So, Pete, if I ask you that, is, that could theoretically happen, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, if this business went out and identical business came in, they would be held to all of the land use entitlement restrictions as the current applicant, if approved. If another business comes in separate, completely different, they would have to, if it required a use permit, they would have to seek entitlements. If it was permitted by right, they could establish themselves on that zone, in that location, but they'd still be held to the restrictions of the site development review.
Yeah. I, okay. I understand that. Thank you.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Excuse me. I'd like to ask the applicant, are you in agreement with all the conditions on this latest document that came out?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Those conditions are all acceptable. Yeah.
Okay. Then...
I just, oh, go ahead.
If there's no further discussion...
I just had, I had a couple of comments. I, I know we approved the C1, the gas station next door, means right on the, the corner of Anne and Rainbow, and I've just been struggling with this one, because we're moving Anne with C1, one more lot over, and then we have, you know, RE right next, right next door to it. And if this was something where you're planning on operating at, I mean, during regular business hours, I could understand, but you're going to have night crews going out and coming back in 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning? It's no different than the landscapers cutting the grass at the, you know, it's there's no noise. Sir, I mean, I, I mean, I, I'm just struggling. The gas station is going to have more... Sir, please. Okay. Um, I mean, I own a big diesel pickup truck, and, I mean, when that truck comes into the neighborhood, it just starts rattling. So, I mean, if I hear 12 of these trucks coming in at 3:00 or going out at certain hours or coming back in at certain hours, I'd just hate to see, I mean, if this goes forward, I mean, at minimum, I mean, I'd like to see a one-year review. There's no other way that I, I could get behind this. Commissioner Chair?
Through the chair. Yeah, this, this was a difficult one for me. When it first came through, I remember going, hearing the application to the north and how difficult that was and the homeowners and the response that came through. That and the changes we had to make to that to mitigate noise and concerns about the, the gas tanks there. And I'd say, I feel like, at this point, I, I could support it as some type of, as a transitional piece, knowing what you've done with the neighborhood, making sure that all of these conditions are in place. And I do share the same concern as Commissioner Schlotman on the, on the noise. And so, I guess, how, how can you mitigate that? Trucks coming in for, you know?
Sure. All, all of these trucks have noise ordinances. They're all quiet diesels. None of them, they're, they're quiet trucks. Half of them are gasoline engines, and the ones that are diesel are all the quiet cleaning diesels. They're all the latest, you know...
And, and I, I understand in respect to your, your statement, but I, I do know just, my old gas truck makes enough noise if I'm, you know, adjacent to a residential property and you have people coming in and opening and closing their doors and starting their cars, and all of a sudden, we're getting a lot of...
So, let me, let me, if we can go to the overhead again, and I can perhaps help on the, a little bit on the, on the noise issue. First off, let's go, let's, if we look at the, go and look at the, here's the site. Let's, let me try to orient it first off so that it relates. I'm going to show you the, the car wash site, convenience store site to the north. So, that's the way that these two sit. Basically, you can see, here's where most of the trucks are going to be parked, and then there's some back here as well, and then there's out front. We're retaining all of this, this buffer, large buffer here, and then there's the building here. But the majority of the, at least half the fleet, over half the fleet, basically, is parked along what is there here is, excuse me, oop, got this turned wrong, is the, is the fast food drive-through. So, the fast food drive-through cars that can occur, along with the gas station for 24/7, are in the same area where the majority of the vehicles are parked, or they're out towards Rainbow. We basically have about half a dozen vehicles at the back that would be anywhere even close, and even then, we provided a great deal of buffering to the, to the, to the budding neighbors.
So, through the chair, are, for the applicant, are all your trucks out all night, or, or half your trucks?
Half. There's maybe five trucks. Let's say half of the fleet run at night, the other half are in the day.
And, and I don't know if we have a way of restricting the trucks that are out at night parking and those stalls that are adjacent to it. I don't know if that's a condition we could add as well, the ones that move. I don't know how we would enforce that or keep...
That'd be a little hard to enforce, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, and one more question. On your first condition, office, so it's office hours, not business hours that you're looking for. I mean, obviously, there's people coming and going throughout the night.
Right. For the, for the trucks, we know the trucks, as we've stated, are going, you know, there's two shifts, basically, operating. What we're saying is that the office itself is only operating to those normal hours. It's not into the evening, and it's not a re, you know, certainly not a retail environment as well. So, we're just trying to reassure that if there's, it's only the trucks that are, that are operating half, half the fleet that goes out.
Okay. Well, through, thank you for that. And through the chair, I, I feel like I could support it with all of these conditions, adding on what the vice chair mentioned about a one-year review. And I'd hope the applicant, too, would make sure that they position their trucks so that they're mitigating the noise as much as possible for their applicants, if this passes through. So, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. May we get a motion?
Ready to make a motion, subject to all conditions. I'd make a motion in regards to the general plan amendment 53, I'm sorry, 63571, general plan amendment. Applicant owner is John M. Bailey. Motion for approval. It's item 18.
Excuse me. Through you, Chairman, as amended.
Subject to review, I'm sorry.
The, no, we'll, we'll put the item number 22 or 23 under one-year review. And to the motion maker, Mr. Trowbridge, did you include it in your motion? Would that change us from general commercial to service commercial?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, motions on the floor. Please cast your vote.
I was supposed to go, oh, sorry.
Motion carries. Not in abstention of Commissioner Flingis.
In regards to item number 19, zoning 63573, rezoning related to GPA 63571, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
And to the motion maker, would that be taken into consideration instead of, from RE to C2, from C2, I mean, RE to C1?
Yes. Those are all subject to the condition that was made by the applicant, which was go to C1.
Thank you, sir.
Not going to, not going to force him to take something higher than what he's asked for.
Thank you.
In regards to item number 20, which is variant 63871, which is the variance related to GPA 63571 and zoning 63573, make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Not in abstention, Commissioner Flingis.
And item number 21, which is varied 63891, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Excuse me. Did that have a one-year review?
That doesn't...
If that's the appropriate statute to go. Said it was either in 21 or 22.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The required review would be placed on item number 23.
Thank you. So, the motion's made. And item...
Please, please go ahead.
And item, regards to item number 22, special use permit 63574, make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions.
Just, just to make a clarification, we can only approve item 22 or 23, and 23 is less intense than 22. So, you can make a motion for approval. However, I won't be supporting that particular application.
It would be to staff. That would be, having 22 and 23 would be in conflict.
That would be correct.
I would draw the application.
The recommendation would be to strike item number 22.
I would, I would make a motion to strike item number 22.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Not in abstention of Commissioner Flingis.
And in regards to item number 23, special use permit 64653, subject to one-year review, I would make a motion to approve, subject to all conditions.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, is the required review at a public hearing?
It'd be administrative review, is what I would recommend.
So, if I may, a one-year administrative review shall be conducted from the date of issuance of a business license?
Very good. Thank you.
As well as the conditions as submitted to the clerk indicating condition number 1, 2, and 3. And I'll read those into the record. One being office hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Item, condition number 2, heavy equipment and machinery, including but not limited to tractors, backhoes, dump trucks, tow trucks, buckets or ladder trucks, front-end loaders, semi-trucks, and trailers and semi-vehicles, shall not be parked or stored on the subject site. No equipment that is available for rent shall be stored on-site. And condition number 3, no vehicles over 15,000 gross vehicle weight ratio with subsection A...
with subsection A, no industrial-grade sweepers, and sub, sub B, no vehicles that require a commercial driver's license.
Thank you for the clarification. Please include those in my motion.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Noting the abstention of Commissioner Flingis. Commissioner Trowbridge?
That's it, isn't it?
Uh, number 24.
In regards to item number 24, Site Development Review 3557, 36, sorry, excuse me, Site Development Review 63575, make a motion for approval, subject to all conditions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, uh, that would be with the addition of, as submitted to the clerk, conditions number 4, 5, 6, and 7. Uh, and I'll read those in the record. Number 4 was maintain the residential appearance of the office. Number 5, all structures shall have the same base color. Number 6, extend landscaping along the north proper line to the east. Therefore, eliminating the request for the waiver as part of the Site Development Review. And number 7, add eight additional trees. And if I may ask the applicant for clarification, that is in the northern property line, adjacent to the northern property line?
That, that would be fine.
Is that...
That was, what was intended, yes.
Is that near the, the shed and the northeast corner?
Yes, that's basically.
Yeah, wherever there's vacant spots, we'll put trees, you know, where we're blocked views of everything.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Noting the abstention of Commissioner Flingis.
Mr. Chairman, items 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, and 24 will be heard at City Council on July 20th, 2016.
Moving on to item number 34, S U, Vance, S U P 63935, applicant owner, Isaac Rosolio, I probably butchered that name, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental, uh, use with a waiver to allow 560-foot distance separation from a similar use where 660 feet is required at 557 Canosa Avenue, Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the immediate area within the 660-foot radius of the subject site is already saturated with short-term rental uses and is recommending denial of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Doug Malin, 720 South Fourth Street, Las Vegas, here representing the applicant, Isaac Rosolio, who is with me. We also have a couple of neighbors that will ask to come up when we're done with our presentation. We are here, if we can zoom in on the map, we are here because there is another short-term rental within 660 feet of the home. This is, uh, Mr. Rosolio's property. The other short-term rental is, in fact, within an apartment complex behind a wall across Rexford. I'll show you what we're talking about here. This is a view from Rexford. I kinda like this one. If you look at the caption on the door, somebody's not following the rule. Anyway, that's the reason why we're here. All, all of the other requirements have been met. We just happen to have, uh, another property that, in this instance, I'm not even sure how this worked, an apartment complex that also has short-term rental. Um, I will submit that the apartments should be considered a little differently than the single-family homes that are just to the east. I'd like to share with you some photographs to show you what my client has done. Um, he purchased the property and spent quite a bit of money cleaning it up. This is what the home looked like when he first bought it. That's what it looks like today. An interior view, same room. Another interior view, same room. Different room, that's how it looks like now. Another Before, after, outside, formerly, presently. One of the issues in neighborhoods when you have a short-term rental is that it's gonna be one of those so-called party houses. Um, he has spent too much money to turn it over to a bunch of guys to trash on a bachelor party. Uh, that isn't the intent. It's not what, it is not what he wants to happen or will allow to happen. Too much time and effort has been put into fixing this place up and making it nice and presentable and clean. This is a nice neighborhood that some say might be partially in transition. It pays to have good people in there, people who are motivated to keep their places nice, to keep their yards up, to keep their homes painted, to keep the landscaping alive. And it's a positive, I think, for the neighborhood. One of the questions that was raised when I spoke to a member of staff was, what can the applicant do to make sure that it doesn't turn into a party house? And I'd like to share with you what has been done there. Got a copy of his short-term rental agreement. There's a maximum eight people that can be here at any one time. That's, that's the number of, of, basically based on beds. Each resident will give him their card, credit card. And they recognize that there will be a deposit if there's damages to the premises. As part of the rules I've highlighted here, it's not a party house. The property is in a residential area, and as a courtesy to neighbors, it is imperative to keep quiet hours between 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. Failure to follow this rule, which results in complaints from neighbors or the local authorities, may result in a non-contestable fine of up to $1,000. So we're making it abundantly clear, anybody who chooses to rent this home, uh, will need to treat it like a home and respect the neighbors. Personal story. We had a little family reunion with my wife's brothers and sisters a couple of years ago. We live in the northwest. I think, I used to be Clark County, but you guys are encroaching rapidly, so I may end up in the city sooner than later. But in the northwest, we found a home that was for a short-term rental. The occupants of that were a physician, a dentist, and a retired educator, and their spouses. You know, because we wanted them close by. We didn't want to have to worry about hotels, and we wanted to be able to gather. We used our home as the gathering place that was for them to be. I think his guess will be similar in nature. What it isn't going to turn into is a bachelor or bachelorette party house. It doesn't pay. It simply doesn't pay. It doesn't pay for the neighbors. It doesn't pay for the wear and tear on the home, uh, and the upkeep that's required. We are very comfortable with staff's, if approved, conditions, particularly the two-year review. Uh, we think it's appropriate, and we think it's one that the applicant understands that he needs to demonstrate to the city that he runs a good place. And we think that's entirely fair. We, we agree with the other staff, if approved, conditions. I noted that there were 20, uh, cards in opposition. Well, I read through the cards, and in fact, there were really only 15 because five were duplicate. Four of them contained addresses of people who lived well outside of the area, and the other 11 were, uh, within 1,000 feet. Uh, I think I'd like to turn some time over to our immediate neighbors. I'll put this up. This is the applicant's home. The neighbors who live here and here are here tonight to support this application, and I'd like to invite them up. If they would come up, please. And, uh, they're the people most affected by this, and I'm pleased that they're here to support this application. If you'd please just introduce yourself and your address and tell them what you think.
Uh, I'm Darrell Tobias, and I'm at 1814 Beverly Way, strictly on the east side of the property adjoining it. Uh, I, I think he's done a tremendous job improving the neighborhood, improving the house, and he's been a very good neighbor and, uh, very cooperative. So I have no objections whatsoever.
I'm Gail Olson. I'm Darrell's partner. I live with him next door. Uh, we've not seen any problems. Uh, we know the, the owner, and he's been very helpful and very supportive with anything we've asked, and we've not seen any problems with anybody that he's had there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Butch Nagy. I live at 555 Canosa, next door to this gentleman. I have no problem with his intentions. I can, I consider it an honor to live next door to him. Thank you.
With that, we'd ask for your approval, and we accept staff's, if approved, conditions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, if you could give this, uh, ready to get a little bit of room?
Hello, my name is Melissa Peterson, 556 Barbara Way. I live right behind the subject property, and I am here for denial. I have had numerous problems with the tenants over every weekend, and to the point that I even had to file a police complaint. And I have that here. I don't know.
You want to turn it in for the record, or?
Turn it in for the record. When I purchased my property, I purchased a property in a residential neighborhood. This property is obviously becoming commercial. That was not my intent when I purchased my home, and I don't want to live by a commercial property where every weekend I have a different set of people coming to party. His pool is adjacent to my pool. His renters have jumped my fence, taken my property, been a nuisance, played loud music. I don't want to invest the next 10 years of my life next to this. Um, also, I'm concerned about the precedent that it sets. Uh, your attorney mentioned that Rexford is at the end of the street, and it's an apartment building. But in reality, it's only seven properties down. In our neighborhood, the apartment buildings, we have a very mixed development style. So if we allow this property to become commercial, Airbnb, what's to say that in the future, someone else one street over can't do it as well? And if we group these properties together, it does change the makeup of a neighborhood. Um, and other than that, I think that's all I have to say on this.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Michelle Laramie. I live at 556 Ellen Way, which is, um, one block north of the, um, I'm sorry, two blocks north of the property being discussed. And I am also, um, here to oppose. I did not fill out a card, so I would just like my opposition to be on the record. Um, I'd also like to point out that while there are restrictions, um, that you may approve, albeit it was not the applicant's property, but we did have an incident in our neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, which we did call about noise. But unfortunately, um, police cannot always get there quickly. We weren't, they weren't able to show up until, I believe, about 2:00 in the morning, and there's no guarantee that the noise ordinance will be, um, will be restricted to the 11:00 because we are short on staff in, in all areas. I also did not, um, I don't think that the Rexford property was officially approved, although if it was, you'll notice that there was a lot of neighborhood opposition to that as well. It's not something that we want, and I just would like it on the record that we don't, I don't support this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll give the applicant two minutes for a rebuttal.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate the concerns of our two neighbors. Both are important, I think, just because of logistics. The lady who lives immediately behind, we'd be pleased to give her the applicant's contact information so she can report any incident directly to him, and he can deal with it promptly. He was unaware of any police report filed in that instance. And that's definitely something that, uh, would not be acceptable to anyone. And, and hi- his motivation is to, to run a clean operation, a quiet operation, and he's motivated to do that. And, uh, he's met his two neighbors to the side. They're here to support him. He has not met, uh, the lady who lives behind him or north of him, and would be pleased to, to get to know her and make sure that her, her, her issues are properly addressed and that she has immediate contact information. The applicant lives within 10 minutes of the home and is determined to self-manage it and to make sure that it's operated properly. We'd ask for your supporting vote, again, with staff conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening. Um, to the owner, please, what is the, uh, minimum amount of nights a person can stay at, at your home?
Uh, there is no minimum, but usually it's, uh, three, three nights, or like weekends, usually. But there is no minimum.
Okay, so three nights or on the weekends. And is this your only home in Las Vegas that you're, um, do, is this...
Yeah.
...one of many or just the only one you have?
Yeah, it's the only one I have.
Only one you have. Okay, um, thank you.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Yes, one of the, uh, speakers talked about noise in the pool and going over the wall to get equipment or pool supplies or whatever, but, uh, was that while this, this house was being operated as a short-term rental, or was that before, when it was a private residence?
It's the first time that I heard about it. I didn't know about any complaint. I didn't receive any letter from the police or...
Have you been operating it as a short-term rental?
Excuse me?
Have you been operating it currently as a short-term rental?
The incident took place approximately three weeks ago.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna, um, just for the record, tell you that I'm not gonna support this item, um, simply because if we support one of these items, who's to say in a couple, next month, we don't have one, you know, in that area as well? So my, the way I look at it is, once we approve one, we, we're not gonna be able to say no to another one, you know, close by. Um, this neighborhood is very old. It's very established, and I understand that the neighbors around it like it now, but in my opinion, it's, um, not appropriate for a neighborhood to have any short-term rentals, simply because, um, I just don't think it's fair to the people that live there full-time and around it. So, um, I'm not gonna support this this evening.
Just a couple of comments myself. I, I just feel being in, it, it's not just due to the distance separation that you, you're not even meeting the distance separation. However, it, it's due to the fact that, uh, the neighborhood that it's in. And, you know, when we start looking at the John S. Park or Beverly Green or even Mcnell or, um, you know, Scotch 80s, I mean, there's certain places where these houses will fit and certain places they, they, they don't. And, um, and on top of that, it doesn't even fit because you're not even meeting the distance separation. However, I mean, you did, did an amazing job with the place. Applaud you. I, I mean, if you, one, run it out long-term, I don't think any of your neighbors will mind, but, I mean, being Airbnb this close, uh, to the strip, um, I, I don't think, and I appreciate the rules that you're proposing with a thousand-dollar fine that, uh, to whoever rents it. We just can't enforce those, uh, rules as the city. Those are private rules, and you don't have to abide by those rules. So for those reasons, I don't think I, I could support this matter. Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair, I'd like to note that, uh, with one of the opposition...
Through the chair, I'd like to note that, uh, with one of the opposition persons, I have a, uh, they sit on a nonprofit board that has a relationship, a landlord-tenant relationship with a, a business I have. But I don't feel my, uh, independence of judgment would be compromised, so I will be voting on the application.
May, uh, may we get a motion?
Yeah. Um, regarding item number thirty-four, I'm gonna follow staff's recommendations this evening for denial of a Bance item, SUP six-three-nine-three-five.
Motion's on the floor and, um, a yes notes for denial. Motion's denied.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty-four is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to item number thirty-five, GPA six-four-zero-one-three. Applicant Olympia Companies, owner City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request to amend the master plan of streets and highways to realign Sheep Mountain Parkway between Grand Teton Drive and Kyle Canyon Road, reduce north Sky Canyon Park Drive from Parkway arterial hundred-and-twenty feet to primary arterial hundred-foot north of Iron Mountain Road and to modify the Grand Canyon, Iron Mountain Road alignment to a major collector eighty-foot, uh, from West Sky Canyon Park Drive to Pulley Road within the Sky Canyon Master Plan area. Ward six, staff recommends approval. Relating items thirty-six and thirty-seven, VAR six-three-nine-six-three, variance for possible action on a request for variance to allow natural washes where low flow concrete channels are required within the Sky Canyon Master Plan community. Ward six, staff recommends approval. Item number thirty-seven, DIR six-three-nine-six-two, for possible action on a request to amend the development agreement for the Sky Canyon development on approximately one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-four acres at the southwest corner of Fort Apache Road and Moccasin Road. Ward six, staff recommends approval.
Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before you, is the culmination of a year-long negotiation with the current master developer for their request to amend the Sky Canyon Development Agreement. Associated with the amendment includes an amendment to the master plan of streets and highways as well as a variance from the Title XX to allow for an ultimate development standard within the natural washes. Some of the major modifications to the development agreement and associated park agreements are: Creates a residential active adult land use category where there was none before. Adds language to allow for major and minor modifications to the master land use plan where there were only previously minor modifications. Defines master developer and city's obligations for the realignment of the Sheep Mountain Parkway. Defines the master developer and city's obligations for a new NPU flood control facility. The fire station construction trigger was reduced by twenty-three percent. The realignment of the Sheep Mountain Parkway to the western edge of the community has occurred. Addition of residential and active adult land use category has been added to the land use plan. Uh, the removal of the blended land use category, uh, has occurred from the land use plan. There's also been the removal of a proposed middle school with the remaining, uh, high school and elementary school. And the locations of community parks and trails have been updated. In relation to the parks agreement, the officer Allen, the memorial officer Allen, Officer Allen Memorial Park construction trigger was reduced from the, from the issuance of the three-hundred, thirty-five, thirty-five-hundredth permit to the issuance of the thousandth permit. All community park construction triggers were reduced by twenty-three percent as well as the total combined acreage of the memorial and then community parks exceeds the adopted standards of two-point-five park acres per thousand residents. Staff finds the proposed amendment, amended development agreement to be in compliance with the Nevada revised statutes two-seven-A, uh, two-seven-eight-point-zero-two-zero-one through two-seven-eight-point-zero-two-zero-seven as well as conforming with goal number three of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan and subsequent objectives three-point-one, three-point-five, and three-point-six. Furthermore, the development generally meets the intent of the traditional neighborhood development, general plan designation by providing for a mix of housing types, commercial, civic uses within the community. As such, staff is recommending approval of the development agreement. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, commissioners, good evening.
My name's Bob Gronhauer, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant, Sky Canyon Master Plan Community. To my left is my partner, Stephanie Allen. And in the audience, we have Mark Bulldog and Chris Armstrong, who are here, uh, from the, uh, master plan community, Sky Canyon. Um, before I turn it over to Stephanie to go through the application itself, the one thing I want to highlight here for everybody who's here listening to this, this is a piece of work that's taken about approximately eight months. We've had weekly meetings with your city, uh, with city employees, uh, in more particular with Lucian, who's, uh, representing Public Works tonight, uh, Tom Perrigo from the Planning Department, along with Peter, who's here tonight. Want to thank your staff, your city attorney's office. We put a lot of time and effort into the document of what we have here today before you that we're proud of to represent and present to the city of, uh, Las Vegas. Uh, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Stephanie to go through the application itself.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Stephanie Allen, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza. Um, as Bob mentioned, again, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and all of their hard work over the last eight months plus on this document that's before you. We think we've got a great agreement and this is an exciting community that's currently already under construction. Um, if I could just direct your attention to the overhead. This is the revised land use plan that's part of the amended development agreement. Um, Peter very thoroughly went through the major changes that are in that development agreement. I'd just like to highlight a couple, um, big, big items. This area up here in the northeast part of the development, just to the south of the Moccasin alignment, is now planned to be an active adult community. There'll be two-thousand units that are deed restricted for active adult housing, which is, um, an exciting change to the overall development agreement. Um, additionally, the Sheep Mountain Parkway alignment has been realigned. It currently is planned to basically cut through the community um, to what is now the Tulley Springs National Monument to the north of the property. That national monument is one of the major impetus for this change of the alignment and we think it's overall a better alignment now, proposed to be located along the western edge of the property and eventually to go up and connect, um, to the ninety-five near the Paiute Reservation. Um, the actual application that's before you with respect to the, um, master plans of streets and highways is simply between Grand Teton up to Kyle Canyon. So, it's just the alignment from Kyle Canyon south to Grand Teton. So, mostly it impacts our property. The remainder of that overall alignment will come back through the process. The city will initiate a GPA, um, amendment for the remainder of that alignment at a later date and that's to the north of Kyle Canyon. So, that'll be a public hearing at a later date. Um, additionally, there's a request to allow natural arroyos. You can see there's some arroyos going through the center of the property. Um, currently, the city code requires concrete channels and we'd like to keep it natural. We think that makes for a better overall look in the community. So, again, we appreciate staff's recommendation on that variance request. Um, and then, as Peter also mentioned, um, which is an exciting change to the development agreement, is the Officer Allen Beck Memorial Park will be under construction sooner than later, within the next couple of years. There was a trigger of thirty-five-hundred, um, units and it's been reduced down to a thousand. So, as houses continue to sell that, that construction of that park will, will be under construction. So, there's a lot of good changes in the development agreement. Again, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and all their hard work. Not only are they extremely professional, but they're enjoyable to work with. We'll miss them every week. So, we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Scott Bogatz, right down the street here in the B of A Building, which is three-hundred South Fourth Street, Suite eight-thirty, eight-nine-one-on-one. Um, we are here on behalf of a number of landowners that we represent that are directly to the north of, of the alignment, of the new proposed alignment, um, that the applicant was just discussing. We have some material. We just learned about this a couple of days ago. We've put together some material. We've mailed it, but I'm sure it hasn't gotten to you, uh, to the chair or to anybody else on the commission yet. If you don't mind, we can hand out, uh, the material. Mr. Badger can do that. While he's doing that, to save time, I will show you what we are here discussing. Let's see. Does that show up well? Yeah, there it is. Okay. The, the current application shows the realignment, as, as, uh, counsel for the applicant just stated, just to the Kyle Canyon Road. But in the next part, in the modification to the development agreement, they show the conceptual plan of the realignment going all the way up to ninety-five. Uh, and this, this particular exhibit is out of their application process for the modification of the development agreement. So, this isn't a document we created. All we added to it is some designations of the property that we represent. Now, we have taken an exhibit, a map, and enlarged it so that you can see what our, uh, while we're here, what our, what our concerns are. And that's the next, uh, document in the handout that we just provided to you. So, if you see here, this shows kind of a larger view of the realignment. This first portion here is what's in the application in front of you, but the conceptual realignment thing cuts through the rest of this property up to ninety-five. The, the owners that I represent own all the property that's designated here in the blue and the red. So, as you can see here, anybody in this room who owned that property would say, "It looks like this new alignment is gonna go right through essentially all of the property." Uh, the alignment itself is on top of all the property that, that we're representing and it bisects the property that we've assembled in this area, uh, kind of on both sides of it. We are fans of the project that the applicant is here, uh, supporting. We're not against it. We're not looking to slow down the process in any way. But as you can imagine, we have concerns on behalf of the, of the landowners that we represent, that the property be protected. Um, and we just learned about this, so we wanted to come before you and not kind of sit on our rights. Uh, what I'd like to do to conclude, and I'll answer any questions, although I've just gotten involved in the process, so I don't know if I'll have all the details. But I'd like to read into the record the letter that we're proposing become part of the record if you're gonna follow staff's recommendation and approve the, uh, the agenda items. Uh, it's, it's addressed to, uh, the chairman and to the members of the planning commission. We represent the owners of the properties that will be adversely impacted by the proposed realignment of Sheep Mountain Parkway, which we call the proposed realignment. The proposed realignment will prohibit and/or severely limit development of a number of parcels owned by the owners. The owners should not be required to bear the burden of the proposed alignment without payment of appropriate compensation, uh, from the city and other appropriate entities. We therefore request that the following statement be incorporated into the record if the applications are approved today. Quote, "Property owners outside of Sky Canyon Master Plan, number one, will not be required to dedicate land to accommodate the proposed alignment. Number two, will not be required to contribute to the acquisition, construction, or maintenance of Sheep Mountain Parkway. Number three, will not be restricted from obtaining entitlements and/or permits to develop their property in accordance with relevant city ordinances, standards, and regulations. And number four, will be appropriately compensated for impacts caused by the proposed realignment." End of quote. Should you have any additional questions or concerns, please feel free to contact the undersigned, which is me, and we, we appreciate your attention to this matter. Um, I'll, I'll answer any questions that the, that the commission might have of me, but that, that is the purpose of our appearance here today.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this, uh, uh, item and I'll allow Ms. Allen and Mr. Gronhauer to have a few minutes for a rebuttal if they so desire.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, we understand their concerns. They, they did send us that letter prior to the hearing, so we appreciate that. Um, I think those are issues for a later date. Um, so, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but we'd ask that, uh, we can move forward this evening and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Um, I'll turn this over to the planning commission for further discussion and possible motion. Mr. Trowbridge, uh, Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you. I have a, a couple of questions. One, the area immediately west of the Sheep Mountain Parkway that in the first renderings that we had were all green, uh, is that indicative of, of park space, of open space?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the, the green area is, um, planned for detention basin, so this will be, both of these large green areas will be detention facilities for flood control.
Okay, that's, the one is the, uh, half a rectangular, almost piece there that's to the west that shows green. I, I can't tell by the, by this drawing here. That's the area we're, we're talking of?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the arroyos that exist through there that were requesting waiver on to leave them natural, are they going to be, um, access points to get to the retention basin?
I believe so. Uh, they'll, they'll be flow from that area in the arroyos and then go under the proposed Sheep Mountain Parkway.
All right, then my last question is regarding the, um, northern extension of the Sheep Mountain Parkway. Is that decision already been made to go through that property up there that these gentlemen were speaking about or is that just a proposal?
It's, it's simply a proposal. It's a conceptual...
Because it looks to me that if the overall construction project would be cheaper if you would get the, uh, Sheep Mountain project up to the Kyle Canyon Road and take an immediate right and take advantage of the current major intersection of Kyle Canyon and ninety-five rather than construct another one. And so, that might eliminate a lot of it, but I now understand this is just a proposal and there may be ten beyond that. So, okay.
Any other questions, comments? Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Pertaining to item number thirty-five, which is GPA six-four-zero-one-three, move to approve following all, uh, subject to all of staff's conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, related item number thirty-six, which is VAR six-three-nine-six-three, move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, final related item number thirty-seven, which is DIR six-three-nine-six-two, move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven will be heard at the city council meeting on July twentieth, twenty sixteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Moving on to, uh, relating items thirty-eight through forty-one. Thirty-eight is MOD six-three-three-eight-seven, applicant owner Jim Marsh American Corporation, for possible action on a request for a major modification to the town center land use, uh, plan from SXTC to GCTC at the southwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Raleigh Street. Ward six, staff recommends approval. Item number thirty-nine, VAC, um, six-three-five-six-three, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate Raleigh Street between Centennial Parkway and Regina Avenue, and Regina Avenue west of Raleigh Street. Ward six, staff recommends denial. Item number forty, VAC six-four-two-six-five, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate U.S. government patentisements on, uh, property located on the southwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Raleigh Street. Ward six, staff recommends denial. And finally, item number forty-one, SDR six-three-three-eight-nine, for possible action on a request for a major modi, a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SD, SDR four-zero-zero-seven-seven, to add two-hundred-nineteen-thousand-eighty-one, uh, square feet to an improved motor vehicle sales new use with a waiver of all the town center parking lot landscape requirements and a waiver to allow zero-foot wide landscape buffer on the south perimeter where eight feet is required. Ward six, uh, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff supports the major modification request, uh, modification six-three-three-eight-seven and is recommending approval of this request, but is unable to support the remaining associated applications due to the lack of a support letter from one of the impacted neighbors for the Regina vacation request and is recommending denial of vacation six-three-five-six-three, vacation six-four-two-six-five, and SDR... 64265, and SDR 63389. Please note an additional letter of concern has been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant?
Randy Black Jr., 100789, Wes Twain here on behalf of Mr. Marsh and myself.
Thank you.
A little background would be good to understand the neighborhood. Mr. Marsh has been in operation at the current facility adjoining the property in question to the east since 2000. He's been in operation in Las Vegas specifically for 45 years. There was an incident in 2008 where Chrysler filed bankruptcy and removed some dealership points for Chrysler and Jeep. Mr. Marsh was affected by that, took the suit all the way to the Supreme Court, and was one of four dealers nationwide out of 800 to win and be re-awarded his Chrysler Jeep dealership. That is the specific use for which we require this additional parcel of land on Centennial, abutting the existing facility to the west. We are in concurrence with staff that they support the major modification on the zone change. All of the other issues that come about from this specific vacations have to do with the property owner who's adjoining us to the east. I'll put this up. We have been in contact with specifically this owner. He's an investor, bought this piece of property in 2005 for an elevated price, which was probably arguably market at the time. Does not have anything to do with land development. It's specifically an investment for them. We've been in discussions with them to gain their support in this application. We believe we're just about there, but they've been out of the country with him and his representative for the last two weeks. It is only specifically this 330 feet of Regina, which is actually only a 660-foot right that cert, 60, 660-foot right-of-way that only circulates between Regina and Giuliano and actually has no impact for traffic circulation whatsoever for any of these neighborhoods. This was originally developed as an RNP area. The four lots that are on the south side of the to-be-vacated, should we so determine, right-of-way for Regina were actually an eight-lot subdivision that was condemned by the RTC, and that is where the bulk of these 660-foot or 330-foot separations come in for these streets. We do have the support of the other four property owners of the five total that are affected. The four of those property owners are developers, the Legacy Group, which is a convalescent care that's coming into the south, the Calora family who's been in the concrete business for 40 years here in Las Vegas, Mike Young who has the office medical development to the east, and then Mr. Marsh beside me here owns these properties here. This is the current facility, and this is the expansion site. We don't feel that the property that is not in support of us is negatively affected as they have 660 feet of frontage on Giuliano, 330 feet of frontage on Centennial. They can still access the southern end of their property along what would be the vacated Regina right-of-way. The two questions that we fielded from this adjoining property owner had to do with, could they still access the southern end of the property, and if we needed to utilize the right-of-way along, the vacated right-of-way along Regina for utilities or drainage, if we would be open to that? And we are in agreement with that. We just simply haven't been able to receive that letter from this one dissenting of the five property owners. In regard, I'm a little confused on the landscaping that we are providing the eight-foot for on the southern boundary here. I do understand that we're requesting a waiver of all landscaping as this entire facade, this entire site will be the facility storing the new car inventory for Mr. Marsh that adjoins the current facility across Riley. We also have full support of every property along Riley for this vacation, so I'm a little confused why staff is recommending denial there as well. We have no problems with working with this owner till we get to the, to the City Council on this issue to see if we can get this rectified before then. Again, we've had a couple of discussions back and forth with them, and we think we have answered all of their questions, but they are not developers and are a little leery of what a vacation means. With that, I'll open it up to questions from the commissioners.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come to the podium. See none? I'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. On the Regina Avenue, you said you're willing to take care of that western neighbor by allowing them easements for utilities?
Utilities and drainage were the two specific questions, yes.
And what about access? Was that part of that, that agreement?
If there's access there, it kind of defeats the purpose of the vacation. Regina on west, east of his property, let's, let's go to Riley so that you get the circulation. Riley accesses from Durango and then has a knuckle that would dead-end here at the intersection of Regina. And then there is a private drive here for the Legacy Group who has developed the convalescent care here. At that point, this street has a terminus.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Sure.
There's no further discussion and prepared to make a motion?
Please go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, starting with item number 38, MOD 63387, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, pertaining to item 39, VAC 63563, move to approve, subject to staff's condition with a couple additional conditions. One pursuant that the applicant is agreeable to having easements for utilities and drainage as a condition, you know, reasonable access on that, and then move to approve.
And is applicant okay with the added condition? Sir? Mr. Black?
Can I understand the access?
That's just what we just talked, when I questioned you a moment ago, I'm just adding there's an additional condition, that you allow reasonable access on that, on your vacation of Regina, that where they'll be able to do reasonable drainage and reasonable utilities.
Correct, but no vehicular access?
No vehicular access.
Okay, understood.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just interrupt here real quick.
Yes.
Condition number six does require drainage. When they do their drainage study, they'll be required to prove how they're going to maintain drainage. So the drainage is covered, but I don't think the utilities for other private owners is covered, so that's a...
Okay, so I'll withdraw the portion pertaining to drainage because it's already covered, add the additional condition for an easement for utilities, reasonable access.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, related item number 40, which is VAC 64265, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number 41, which is SDR 63389, move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 38, 39, 40, and 41 will be heard at the City Council meeting on July 20th, 2016.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Moving on to relating items 42 through 45, starting with 42, ZON 63938, applicant owner Rancho Verde Apartments 2015 LLC et al., for possible action on a request for rezoning from R5 apartment to R4 high-density residential at 98 South Martin Luther King Boulevard, Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. 43, VAR 63939, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 37 additional parking spaces where 75 additional spaces are required for the proposed expansion of an existing multifamily residential development, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Item number 44, VAR 63944, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow one 120-square-foot wall sign on each of two proposed multifamily residential buildings where 50 square feet per sign is allowed, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. And finally, item 45, SDR 63940, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 36-unit addition to an existing 264-unit multifamily residential development, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial.
Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the R5 district is not supported by the Unified Development Code. Therefore, a rezoning is needed to bring the 12.36-acre site into compliance with general current plan, current general plan designation. Staff recommends approval of this request as the proposed density of the site falls within R4 requirements, and the uses allowed by the R4 district are identical to those allowed by the R5 zoning district. With regard to the parking variance, a total of 37 additional spaces, or approximately one space per apartment that will contain as many as 96 new bedrooms in total, will be provided with no additional space for guests. Staff cannot support such a reduction in parking facilities when the site can be configured to meet current parking requirements. In regard to the signage variance, the 120 square feet proposed per sign represents 140% increase in the size, which is too excessive for this residential area. On-site advertising can still be maintained at the allowed 50 square feet. Staff therefore recommends denial of the signage variance. And note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication. Thank you.
Yes, can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mark Lemoine, 9081 West Sahara Suite 210, representing the applicant. With me is Matt Huss, representing the owners. I appreciate staff's efforts on this, and I'd like to address the issue of parking first. This small porsha parcel is the former tennis court for this residential, for this apartment project, and the owner would like to convert it to additional apartment uses, recognizing that the, the types of folks that are living in this project are working downtown and are not utilizing the existing parking very much. They don't have a lot of cars. The tenants generally have fewer cars, maybe one car per family. They generally work downtown at the casinos and rely on public transportation to get to work. This type of tenant is attracted to proposed apartments and will likely be the tenants of this, these new units. The downtown Centennial plan supports fewer parking spaces and the use of public transportation. And for those reasons, we would like to request the approval of our variance for parking. Regarding signage, this property is sort of fronting Martin Luther King Boulevard, but is behind a commercial building, and therefore, the closest that it comes to Martin Luther King is about 250 feet. That's one of the reasons that we're proposing somewhat larger signage so that it can be noticed over the top of the existing mattress store on MLK. The other side faces Highway 95, and I'm not sure what size sign would be appropriate there, but I thought, we thought that 120 square feet would be appropriate facing north toward US 95. With that, I'll take any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. It appears there's several people here, so please take, take the mic, and there's three mics up here, so go ahead and line up at the other mics.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Director Parago. My name is Daniel Deegan. I live at 1801 Granite Avenue, which is about 200 feet from the aforementioned 98 MLK. I have sent in two requests for objection, which the postmaster refused to deliver without postage. Well, I am mean. And if I could bother the clerk, everything I have to say tonight, I have included in a letter to Councilman Barlow, and I've provided a copy for each commissioner. If you would glance at it, I would be most grateful, most appreciative. The reason sent to Councilman Barlow is that he had worked with the former Rancho Manor Neighborhood Association on problems dealing with this problem property over the last 15 years, and it has been 15 years of problems. So with your indulgence, I will read into the record, if I may, the points that I would like to make. I'm requesting his intervention in the matter. In recent years, we've become accustomed to having developers with projects that may impact residential neighborhoods, perhaps adversely, be required to hold neighborhood information meetings with all nearby property owners notified at the developer's expense. This seems not to have been done in this case, and it is frankly disturbing that this is being tracked to the Planning Commission action without such consultation. Is this going to be the general rule? If it had been properly informed, the neighborhood would strenuously oppose the rezoning of the parcel to R4. Consulting Title 19, Chapter 6, I discover R4 high-rise permits an unlimited number of floors. The site development review accompanying the application process presents elevation diagrams of the intended new three-story buildings, possibly within the 35-foot limit of R2, and certainly within the 55-foot, 5'4" limit of R3. Therefore, it appears that the applicant is asking for zoning entitlements in excess of what is required for his project. Since we have been denied contact with the developer or the planning staff on this matter, we must entertain the prospect of an unspoken intention to clear in the future the present structures and develop high-rise monstrosities on that property adjacent to our R1 subdivision. We also note the Title 19, Chapter 6, contains weirdly height restrictions for unlimited number of floors, and there are adjacency standards which may be recognized in this instance. Again, deprived of communication with the developer and the planning staff, we do not know how much protection such provisions might provide our neighborhood, but suspect that they may be easily waived. Had the notified neighbors been properly informed, a far greater opposition would be observed. A second issue, which you, Councilman Barlow, as well aware of, is longstanding lack of security in our neighborhood arising from the ability of persons to scale the perimeter wall and pass from Rancho Verde Apartments into the Rancho Manor Neighborhood. This is the proper time to address this issue. The fact that the current owner may not have caused the problem is irrelevant. It's a legacy problem which comes with the property. The residents who face trespassers passing through their yards, hopping the perimeter wall, back and forth to Rancho Verde, would ask for all reasonable, feasible legal action to be taken to deter such trespassing. The massive amount of wall climbing and hopping that occurs at the cul-de-sac of Mesquite Avenue, well, you can find that, as you know, has been a headache for the old Rancho Manor Neighborhood during its entire 11-year existence. I have entertained myself the anguish pleas of the absentee owner of number 50, Shadow Lane, over his inability to keep tenants because of the wall-hopping transients who sometimes enter the properties along Shadow Lane. And indeed, I've heard those complaints myself. Our association has tried for years to enlist the cooperation of the owners of 98 MLK Boulevard, but to no avail. We believe that this festering sore should be treated before any new planning privileges are granted. A variety of solutions have been mentioned, and I don't believe it's too much to ask city planning staff and the developer to consider them. One of the best solutions I heard from the original owner in 2003, 2002 period, she accepted her responsibility for... two thousand and two period, she accepted her responsibility for stopping transient, uh, trespass. She said, informed by the city building inspector, that the wall could not be raised with concrete blocks, she proposed putting framed sheets of expanded metal as the ornamental feature on top of the wall. Uh, they can be supported at the top and also by rebar extending to the ground. They, they offer very poor handholds for climbers. There are possible solutions to the trespass problem. A chain-link fence setback from the wall in a sensitive area was helpful with a similar problem that occurred in the former desert park apartments at one-hundred MLK. Other solutions can be considered. Perfection may be impossible, but any serious effort set remediation will be gratefully received by our residents should the developer and the planning staff deign to cooperate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, I'll let you go on for about six minutes. If I could ask everybody else to keep their comments, uh, a little shorter, uh, and try not repeating anything that has already been said. Thank you. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is, uh, Tim Emerson. My address is two thousand Collins Avenue. I am a resident of, uh, the Rancho Manor area. Um, the city has spent a lot of money in the last few years to, um, designate this area as a comeback neighborhood with the medical district, uh, going in now. It's very important that we preserve what we do have. We don't feel that, uh, this neighbor is a neighbor that plays, plays well with others. Uh, it's been, uh, as Dan said, it's been twelve years of non-stop, um, nonsense of these, uh, residents and people cutting through. Uh, they showed you some great pictures of the front of the property, very well done, nice beautiful sign. What they didn't show you is the back of the property. Um, the wall that, uh, Dan speaks of is, um, been, uh, falling apart for many years. It's a hazard to, um, not only the residents parking in those spaces, but also the kids. Uh, we brought pictures today of the kids jumping the fence just this Saturday when we were driving through. Um, I, we, um, disagree with this plan. Uh, until our association can see the plan, talk to these, uh, developers, we, we would like, um, this to be completely, uh, denied at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Bill Spazletti, forty-six Shadow Lane. Um, I have the, uh, picture here. I'm not sure if it's, can you see it? Okay. This is from their, uh, application. Uh, here's Shadow Lane, here's Mesquite, the cul-de-sac there, and all the properties along here that, I will just reiterate the, the problem about wall jumpers. And, uh, the letter from, from the architect, uh, talks about, and it was stated here earlier, that the, uh, general, the, the people that will, uh, rent these apartments are the same type of tenant. Well, if we get more types of tenants than other hundred-plus people in these apartments, how many of them are going to be wall jumpers? Uh, my particular property, I had a, uh, break-in Christmas time where my grandkids' toys were stolen. Uh, just a few months ago, I had a wall jumper come over and take a couple of small two-wheel bikes, bicycles. That one I didn't report to the police. I wish I would have now. But there's a problem, and I'll just reiterate what Dan said. Don't approve this until they, uh, they resolve the problem. Um, as far as neighborhood, uh, meetings go, uh, Sheriff Gillespie had a nice neighborhood meeting with, uh, Rancho Manor when they, before they built the, uh, the Metro Central Command. That was a very good example of, of, uh, informing everybody. So that's it. Thank you.
My name is Mark O'Magdalio. I'm resident of two thousand Collins Avenue. Uh, I would like to speak for the record that I definitely have posed, uh, item forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five regarding the Rancho Verde rezoning as well as the variance that they're, uh, applying for. Um, I, you have mentioned a lot of the vintage communities there in Las Vegas, and one of them is Rancho Manor. Uh, I'm very, and a lot of the residents have been generational residents there, has been there for over forty years, have, was born there. Uh, I'm, we're all very proud of the neighborhood. Uh, I'm personally, as well as all the, uh, residents, are quite bullish about the neighborhood in regards to, uh, from transitional, from the recession to a regentrification of the neighborhood and allowing this, uh, uh, rezoning and, uh, items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five, I believe will bring more transients, uh, and then, as well as the higher density, where are these people going to park? I, I understand that the developers say that they do not have vehicles, or not a lot of them are. Uh, however, I believe that would be, that would poses an issue with the density as well as additional parking for guests, which I believe is zero now. Um, now, I, I know that, um, Commissioner, uh, Councilman Barlow is very bullish of our community. It's been ignored for the last few years now. There is new blood in, within the residents. We want to reorganize, and we want to have, take pride in this neighborhood, and we appreciate your, uh, consideration to deny this, the applications. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Stojak, eighteen-twenty West Mesquite. I've resided there since nineteen-seventy-eight. It's my parents' house. They've had it since seventy-one. Uh, Mr. Deegan and I represent, uh, the corporate memory of the Neighborhood Association, if you will. We've had involvement since it was formed. Uh, the other part, uh, as the other gentleman mentioned, generational. I remember my father being against the high-density housing at ninety-eight and one-hundred. And for all the reasons he stated, they've all come to pass. Uh, calls for service in the neighborhood went over the top. We routinely find stolen vehicles abandoned in the cul-de-sac because the wall hoppers, they go joyriding, dump the car, hop the wall in their home. So we've got a major problem. The problem is so long-lasting, the Clark County School District drops off students that reside at ninety-eight and one-hundred MLK on Mesquite. And they hop the walls. They hop the walls in both directions to get on the bus in the morning and go home in the evening. Uh, I also, as Mr. Deegan stated, have a great concern why this big jump in the zoning that's not necessary for their stated project. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll give the applicant two minutes for a rebuttal.
Thank you. Um, it seems like the problem that's being identified tonight is mostly having to do with wall jumping. The, the, uh, perimeter wall on the west side of the project, which is quite far away from where this new portion is. I agree, it, it sounds like something that does need to be addressed by the property owner to work with the, the neighbors to resolve that issue, but that issue does not affect what we're asking for tonight, which is, uh, the variance for the parking. We have done surveys, uh, on the property during the night, during the day, when people are working, on the weekends, and this parking lot truly is underutilized. Uh, it is not being used that much. So having, adding fewer parking than is required, I do think makes, uh, this project, uh, less viable. Um, the issue of the signage, of course, is for the Commissioners to decide upon, uh, and I'm hoping that we could work with the city and the neighbors in the future to get this project moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll turn this over to the point commission for discussion and possible action. Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I live, I don't know, five minutes from that location. Born and raised, I remember when that development was built, I think it was called Racket. Rack, was it called Racket Apartments or something, and, uh, seen it, seen its demise, and, and also seen its redevelopment. Uh, to be honest with you, at least facing MLK, I pass it two, three times a day, and I, I don't get a chance to go behind it as much. I have been back there before, but I don't get a chance to go back there. Um, so this is my neighborhood as well. I, I go to Costco, I get gas at Costco, um, you know, this is, as I say, this is, this is my hood. And, uh, so my, I want to, I have a couple of questions for you. One, have you met with the residents?
No. According to staff, we were not required to have a neighborhood meeting.
Okay. Uh, well, there's not a chance in my, I, I'm only one vote, but there's not a chance that I would support something like this without you meeting with the residents. And although your concerns, you're, you're, you're saying that the issue of the wall has nothing to do with the other, but if you don't get that right with the residents, what makes you think you're going to get everything else right? So it does all tie. And, um, I think you need to go back, you need to meet with these residents, and you need to work something out before you come back to this body to, you know, seek what you're seeking. Is, does the property owner live in Las Vegas?
Commissioner, good evening. My name is Matt Huss, and I work, uh, directly with the ownership. I'm, I'm basically the, uh, the owner's rep, and I've, I've worked with the company for approximately ten years now. Uh, yes, the, the ownership does reside in, in Las Vegas. We have other, uh, multifamily assets in, in the valley and some other types of development as well. We, it sounds like this is a very deep-rooted issue and one that's been around for a long time.
Decades.
Uh, decades. Uh, we, we acquired this in two thousand and twelve, and we, we know it's not a perfect property. We, uh, we initiated security, armed security. We made a number of improvements to the development after we acquired it. Uh, landscaped, uh, some balcony improvements. Uh, we redid the clubhouse and enhanced it and the pool areas. Uh, but to answer your question, uh, no, we, we haven't met with, uh, the, the neighboring property owners. And although I, I am aware of periodic incidents as occurs in a, in a large development such as Rancho Verde, I, I was not aware of, uh, the concerns that were expressed, uh, this evening, and, uh, and I understand they're very valid concerns, and, uh, I firmly believe an open line of communication is important, and, uh, I, I would very much appreciate the opportunity to meet with the residents, I, I, to express, to, to learn more about their concerns and to see what we can do to, to help them and to help curb some of these issues that have been occurring.
Great. Did you, did, did you guys develop the mattress firm? Is that your development? Is that another developer?
No, we did not. That, that was another developer.
Okay. Uh, you know, I would recommend that we abate this till July twelfth and that you go back and meet with the residents, listen to their concerns, and try to work something out before you come back to this body. Um, that would be my recommendation, or I wouldn't be able to support the application as it's presented today.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Thank you, Kim. I also would ask, your building, or your proposal is to build these thirty-six additional units in the portion of the parcel that was, uh, the tennis courts. And so you're taking away a very significant recreational amenity. Whether it's used for tenants or not, it's still where the kids can ride their bicycles or go bounce a ball or play catch. Where do you intend to replace the open space?
Commissioner.
My, I don't expect an answer now, but next time when you come back, it'd be good to have an answer to that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Trowbridge. Uh, Commissioner Flingis?
If there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make some motions.
Uh, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to start with item number forty-two, ZON six-three-nine-three-eight. I think we definitely need to bring that in line with our, uh, code or our plan, excuse me. So I'm going to move to approve subject to staff's conditions.
Mr. Chair, a point of clarification. Um, do we have the ability to give the applicants an opportunity to abate this till July twelfth before?
If you'll let me finish these motions, I wanted to get this one out of the way first, and I think you'll, you'll hear what, I think what you, I'm going to address what your concern was in just a moment.
Well, my concern deals with changing the zoning of all of them, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five, so, um, I'm not sure, I, I can't get behind supporting forty-two, uh, without having the, maybe I missed something, but without having the, the meeting with the residents, then I can't get behind supporting any items.
There, there, there's a, uh, motion on the floor, but just prior to placing that vote, just to, um, state what forty-two is about, and says zoning matter reducing the zone from R-five to R-four, so it's lower density. The other items are variances and a SDR. And so, um, anyways, um, motions on the floor, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I'm just gonna, I'm going to be moving to deny items forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. However, uh, I'm going to ask that it go forward to the city council, and in the interim between here and the city council, I would urge you to have a, uh, neighborhood meeting and address these concerns with your neighbors, and so that these things can be ironed out before you get to the city council. So with that said, I'm moving to, uh, for item number forty-three, VAR six-three-nine-three-nine, I am moving to deny.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote.
So, also, once again, Mr. Chair, for point of clarification, I, I would like for this to come back to this board so that we have an opportunity to understand what's going on before it goes to city council. Uh, you know, this is in my neighborhood. I want to have to, a say on this before we just give it off to city council. So for point of clarification, uh, council, if, since we do have a motion on the floor, then, uh, that will not happen if we don't approve that motion.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Well, I, I guess, I guess the clarification would be this. If, if the majority does not agree with, uh, the Commissioner's, uh, motion, then someone could make a motion in the alternative to hold it until such time as that neighborhood meeting is held, and it would come back before you. If this person's successful, then no, you will not have that opportunity to see it again.
We would have to rescind this motion and then make another motion to abate them.
Well, the, well, you have to vote on the original motion that's currently on the, on the, on the floor right now, and then if that was not successful, a majority didn't vote in favor of that motion, then someone could, in the alternative, make another motion to hold the item until July, at which time you would then see the motion come back to you. Sorry, you'd see the item come back to you. So they would basically have to vote no on his motion in order for someone to vote in the alternative, and then you could make the motion to hold the item, and then you could see it again before it goes to city council.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to withdraw my motion on item number forty, on item number forty-three.
Commissioner Kehr, can we get a motion?
Thank you. I make a motion to abate agenda item forty-three, VAR six-three-nine-three-nine, uh, until the July twelfth meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, if you want to hold all of the items, you can obey all of them.
Make a one, great, perfect. I, I wish to obey items forty-three through forty-five until the, uh, July twelfth meeting. And thank you, uh, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, um, it's obeying, uh, part of the related items and not all of the related items. If this is a direction that the commission chooses to go, I, I would respectfully ask to then perhaps reconsider item forty-two so that all of the items stay together when they come back.
Okay, uh, before we move to obey then, Mr. Chairman, I would move to rescind our vote on item number forty-two.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. Commissioner Kehr.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You, thank you. I'd like to abate items forty-two through forty-five until the July twelfth meeting, uh, subject to, uh, the developer meeting with the neighbors. And I want to thank Commissioner Flingis for his indulgence.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Items are, uh, items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five are held in abance till the July twelfth, twenty sixteen, Plan Commission hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before they go, I think we should demand that a, uh, in conjunction with Commissioner Carr's request, that a meeting be held. So I don't know if that's been, uh, subject, I don't think we've made that clear to them yet officially.
I mentioned it in the motion, but I'm not sure if that's sufficient.
I, I think it was clear.
Thank you.
And I think the applicant understands what the commission's, uh, desires would be this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, we've been going for about two hours and eleven minutes, and we have to give the staff a break, so we'll be back in about ten minutes.
Excuse me, I'm looking for Steve Gabecki.
I am trying to make it easy, okay? I'm trying to lead the line, one condition, we put yours in, and I just, five eighty-six, if you lead it down, it's a hundred and fifty-five, that's all I'm proof of right there, I gotta keep coming back, yeah, so, it's, it's almost those two conditions are similar in itself, if you read the two conditions. We're saying the same thing, but it's written here.
Yeah, so, but, but, but he put that into.
Yeah, so.
We're not, it's gonna be, this year's seventeen seventy, next year's seventeen.
We're not, yeah, we're not hoping.
Thank you for coming, so happy to be open up.
We got too many to go.
So, we only had to make that two thousand.
Which is really no different, you say, you know, students, it says it's two hundred.
It says he's required, he may have the, that gets his twenty-four.
But it doesn't, it just has, I'm trying to give an initial, we do, we're at a hundred conditions, so, so, yeah, if you keep setting, yeah, so, so, you could, you could do, as required, you have decent, uh, students, not to, not to exceed.
Second sentence of the verse, you know, challenge, you, you, and, and, I think you tried to add, it wasn't the numbers, seven, so, I don't know if that's going to be, ever if it's, five, I'm sorry, so, so, we, 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 I'll tweet.
I don't even take the steps, I think, well, the, the, well, you didn't grab it, you started to give us email it, you know?
I don't think I did, uh, because remember, we have city council associated to it, too, so, look, if that's a tweet, I might come and look at you and start yelling at the screen, and vice versa.
He's okay with, he's, 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 so, we probably want that.
Yeah, I would rather be up here with the approval and something, yeah, to your side, and so, if you guys, so, I, 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 I,
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and resume this planning commission meeting with relating items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine. Starting with item forty-six, Z O N six four four three nine, applicant Main Street Development LLC owner W R P. Subtrust F B O William Shane Coley et al. for possible action on a request for a rezoning from P R Professional Office in Parkin to R four High Density Residential at five twenty-one and five twenty-five South Sixth Street, Ward three. Staff recommends approval. Item number forty-seven, S U P six four 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 zero for possible action on a request for a special use permit for mixed-use development, Ward three, staff recommends approval. Item number forty-eight, V A R six four 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 one for possible action on a request for variance to allow a zero-foot front yard setback on Sixth Street where ten feet is required, Ward three, staff recommends approval. And finally, item number forty-nine, S D R six four 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 two for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-story mixed-use development including three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet of commercial space and twelve multifamily residential units with a waiver of perimeter landscape standards to allow a three-foot buffer along the north property line where six feet is required and a two-foot buffer along the south property line where ten feet is required, Ward three coffin. And can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to demolish the existing offices on the site and construct a three-story, thirty-six-foot-tall mixed-use development with twelve residential units and thirty-eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet of office and restaurant uses at the ground level. The intent is to create a walkable environment with a dense residential element. The R four zoning district primarily allows residential uses with densities exceeding twenty-five point four nine dwelling units per acre, but can include lower-density multifamily units and mixed commercial and residential uses such as the one proposed. The site is located just east of the downtown Centennial Plan boundary, but does incorporate some features required by the office core district such as zero-foot setbacks, widened detached sidewalks with tree-lined amenity zones, and special corner and alley pavement treatments. These modifications are compatible with this area. The area is expected to be included in the proposed downtown master plan as part of the Founder's District. Transit-oriented historic neighborhood that's envisioned to include mixed-use residential with ground-level retail and office at key intersections. The mixed-use concept also conforms to the twenty-twenty master plan vision for the revitalization area, which encourages neighborhood amenities and relaxation of setbacks where offset by enhanced landscaping. The applicant has designed the property to front Sixth Street and has requested that Sixth Street be considered the front as part of this review. Staff supports the requested variance to bring the building towards Sixth Street and the waiver request to allow reduced landscape buffers as the site will resemble other developments in the downtown Centennial Plan and continues the pattern of streetscape development along Sixth Street. Staff therefore recommends approval of all applications. Note that additional protests were received after publication. Thank you.
Before we continue, I have recently completed a project for Chris Gonya, which is, I think, a part of this project, so out of abundance of caution, I'll be abstinent on this matter and turn this over to Commissioner Quinn. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, members of the commission, my name is Tom Schuman. I live at three fifty-three East Bonneville Avenue, eight nine one oh one, and I represent, I am an owner. I'm also the design architect for the project. I have with me Rob Messiana, who's with Joe Law Studios. He's an executive architect and preparing the drawings as well. We're in agreement with all conditions as proposed by staff, and we're thrilled that they're recommending approval, and we're here before you to answer any additional questions you may have of us.
Thank you very much.
I'll mention now the other owners are also here in the audience, Chris Gonya and Rob Coley are the other two owners involved with the project. Anyhow, I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here to speak against this project or to support this project? If so, please come forward. If not, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to my commissioners for any questions that they might have.
Through the chair, to the applicant, I think they brought a wonderful project forward for downtown, and I will be supporting the application. If there isn't further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
On item number forty-six, C O N six four four three nine, make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Next one.
Item number forty-seven, S U P six four 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 zero, make a motion for approval. Subject to conditions, correct? Thank you. Looks like that motion carries. On item number forty-eight, I'd like to make a motion, V A R six four 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 one, for approval. Subject to conditions. Item number forty-nine, looks like that motion carries as well. Item number forty-nine, S D R six four 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 two, like to make a motion for approval. Subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, applicant. Have a nice evening.
Madam Vice Chair, items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine will be heard at City Council on July twentieth, twenty sixteen.
I'm sorry, what is the date?
July twentieth, twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
Moving on to relating items fifty and fifty-one, V A R six four four eight one, applicant owner Mesquite Wood LLC for possible action on a request for variance to allow zero additional parking spaces where thirty-six additional parking spaces are required for a banquet facility at a park and period development at four eighteen West Mesquite Avenue, Ward five. Staff recommends denial. Item number fifty-one, V A R six four six five zero for possible action on a request for variance to allow an eight-foot-tall front yard fence where five feet is required, Ward five. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a use that is too intense for the subject site, located within an industrial zoning district that previously housed an office use, and for requesting a variance for an eight-foot-tall fence and the front yard setback that was constructed without a building permit. Staff finds no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance and is recommending denial of both applications. Thank you.
Thank you. And just speaking with the city attorney, I've worked with Bunnyfish Studios on many projects in the past, just spoke to the city attorney, and Bunnyfish has not talked to me about this project, so therefore I can vote on this with independent judgment.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. Applicant?
Commissioners, vice chair, director, city attorney, staff, I'm Craig Palacios. I'm with Bunnyfish Studio. We're at one twenty-four South Sixth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, here with Steve Spawn on four eighteen Mesquite. Mr. Spawn has, we believe, is a forerunner in a neighborhood that we think is going to be something that's a very integral part of the downtown development and has an idea of a business that he thinks will work well and be a forerunner to what's already starting to happen over on Bonanza and potentially in connection between sort of the East Fremont, Symphony Park, and then West Side School area. So we think that, you know, these requests for variances make sense, particularly the parking one, which is already an impaired parking situation. The building was never built in order to accommodate any parking whatsoever, and you would have to actually remove the building in order to get any kind of parking on-site. We consider the oversized gate the only solution to the existing condition of the neighborhood. A lot of neighborhoods downtown, the building that we're about to move into on Maryland and Carson are generally barricaded with bars because of the nature of this building and the outdoor uses and the things that happen between the street and the building. You can't necessarily barricade those things in. It needs some sort of protection from the element that's in that neighborhood.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. See none, we'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission.
Through the chair, I'd like to disclose that I've had a relationship with the applicant in the past in various businesses with purchasing art, but don't have anything currently outstanding and will be voting on application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you through you. I have a couple of questions for you. So you want to go to a banquet facility that will house events and parties will be happening there?
Yes, correct.
So where do people park?
There is a lot of shoulders on the side of the road, and there's, there's street parking also on the, on City Parkway.
Which would infringe on other persons', other people's businesses?
Not necessarily. If you go there at night, there's absolutely nothing there. There, in fact, on the way over here, what I did, what there is at night is when you go under the underpass at City Parkway, there is like six shopping carts and about ten homeless people underneath the expressway, so that's really the, the only people there.
And if you've met with the other business owners and...
Yes.
Are they in support of this? I don't...
Yes.
Do you have any supporting documentation for that?
Just verbal. Verbal. In fact, we have, well, actually, we have documentation through the city meeting that we had where one of the, the neighbor to the east of us is actually talking about potentially doing a joint parking space, but that could possibly happen, it could possibly not, so.
Well, there's nothing that supports, not to say that you are not, you know, I'm not calling you a liar or anything, but just to say verbally, I agree to it, doesn't quite cut it when you're going to impose on other people's rights of ways in, in that area. Especially for parking.
Okay.
So, I mean, I...
It's in, it's in the city, it's in the city notes that the meeting...
Well, I didn't, I'm looking.
Well, I'm, I don't have, I don't have that document with me.
Is there something the staff has? Because I'm looking, I don't, I don't see any...
The city council with Betsy Frey, well, we had a meeting, and that was, I don't know if that's included in that or not.
Am I missing something? Because I don't see anything.
I didn't...
I don't see any letters of support. I don't see any opposition cards or cards that are in support of this document, of this, this, this agenda item that are in support or denial of this.
Well, the, the main neighbors, quite honestly, when you're looking to the south, is the highway berm. It is a giant highway berm. The neighbor to the east is shipping containers. The neighbor to the north is a railroad track. The neighbor to the west is a Kwanzaa hut. There's, there's really nothing there.
Yeah.
We're, we're happy to, I mean, really what we're talking about is, is finding the people who own these properties and, and reaching out and talking to them wherever they are, and we're happy to do that. There wasn't a lot of care done in this because they're vacant, you know, there's not anybody living in...
Right. I think it's going to be tough to approve without, with any parking for a banquet facility, that you're going to have people coming there and you don't have any parking. That just doesn't...
How much parking is there now? Is there existing parking?
Well, you said there's zero parking.
There's zero parking?
Yeah, there's, there's four sort of parking spaces on-site, but...
So, like, let's say you have your employees come to work and you have twelve employees and they have twelve cars. I'm confused. Where are they, where are people going to park?
So they're parking on the street right now, but let's be clear that when, when the, when Steve acquired the property, it was, it was built so that there was no opportunity on-site to have property. There wasn't parking there that, that was removed at any point. This is in the impaired jurisdiction of the code, because at the time it was built, there was no requirement for parking, and the architecture is, is, is built that way.
Another thing I would like to say is Mesquite Wood, the road, it actually ends at my property. There is, it doesn't go further than that property, and so that's like literally the end of the road, and so there is shoulders on both sides of that property that people are, you know, would use.
Let's take a look at some maps.
I'm not prepared to...
Well, I'm sorry, I can't support it. I just don't understand it.
I can't agree.
And Commissioner Quinn makes a valid point about employees, they're going to park in there. You know, you just can't park in the desert or park, which is anywhere haphazardly, so I, I won't be supporting this. I'm going to go along with staff's recommendation for denial.
Commissioner Chair?
Through the chair, and I hear my commissioners loud and clear on what they're saying. I will say, though, to maybe add a little more texture to this conversation, that this was an art studio, if I remember, in years past, and there's been a host of events, I can remember, that were at this parcel that, when you're out there being adjacent to the, to the freeway right there, and literally after five o'clock, there's nothing between Bonanza and Grand Central Parkway. We're auged in how it transitions. The Molaski Center empties out, all that construction site, that really stuff, that stuff stops around three o'clock. It could go later when the, when the plant's going for, I think there's a steel yard in the back corner to the west of it. And I, and, and there is, seems to be a hardship with just what the applicant says, that it was built and, and doesn't have parking, so, you know, I feel like just knowing what it's been in the past and how events have gone off in the past in, at this site, that I could probably support it. But I do hear the other commissioners loud and clear on what they're saying. Thank you.
Yes, and I'll make a couple of comments. Went there many of years ago, probably four or five years ago, when Mike Wardle moved in there, and, you know, I think he might have had four or five artists throughout this building, is that a fairly accurate statement?
Yes.
And basically, it's a dead-end street to nowhere. Can I ask you what the, what the purpose is and behind having the banquet facility versus just the art studios?
Well, we feel that it's an underutilized area, and you have two very distinct different districts. You have the Symphony Park overlay district, and then you have the Historic West Side district. And this is a very underutilized area where, right now, if you look at it, it's basically vacant land, it's extremely industrial, and we did some, some feedback where we brought in event planners and things like that, and people love the structure of the building. You hear in a lot of the city meetings that they want to see these old buildings redone, they want to see these old buildings, you know, with these great boat trusses, they want to see these used and utilized, and so this is, when these people came here, they were just blown away. They said, we didn't even know anything like this was in Las Vegas. And so another factor that we see is potentially if you're, you know, if somebody's wanting to do an event and it's like for a hundred people, you might very well have a bus, just bring in two buses, bring in the people, and then, and then go from there. So we understand that that's kind of...
Can I jump in for a second? Can I show pictures?
Yes. If we can go to the overhead, please.
So this is, this is an image of Steve driving over, and you can see the, the element that's there outside right now. This is his neighbor on one side. This is his property. This is his neighbor to the other side. And this is the interior of the property. This is what the intervention that Steve's made in this neighborhood. If you look at the aerial view, across the street from him is a berm. This is empty. He's got train tracks on the back. Here's the Kwanzaa hut that we showed, and then sort of parking. And again, we're happy to go out and, you know, it's easy enough to identify who these homeowners are, wherever they, these landowners are, wherever they are, and get in touch with them and ask them if they mind if we park in front of their property. We don't imagine that would be the case. Yeah, the Ready Mix Plant parks here, and then what used to be Steel Engineers is now the, the rehab shop and reality show. Rick's Restoration, thank you. But what he's doing, and we hear this, you know, in our industry, on most projects that we ever work on, there's a, there's a real need or whatever it is, if it's perceived or real, but a lot of our clients talk about this need for an event space, and it's, it's a little abstract to me as an architect, but over and over and over, we hear about a need for fifty to three hundred-person event space. We have a lot of convention center space here in Las Vegas, but there aren't that many spaces here. So the, the idea here is that Steve will be filling a gap and a need in a place that's underused, and you can see the architecture and the, the care that he's putting into his building in a place that's a really rough condition right now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Look, I'm familiar with the, with where it is. My wife works at the Molaski Building, I go to the Twenty-Five Fitness in Molaski Building, I travel down F Street, City Parkway, Bonanza F Street, you know, on a regular basis, so I know exactly where the property is. I just think that it, it would be prudent for this board to approve a banquet facility without identifying where you're going to park. Now, if there's a joining area, I think it'd be, it'd be beneficial for you to come up with some type of agreement or some type of special use permit to utilize that property for parking, similar to, you know, downtown property is utilizing for certain hours property for valley parking. They also utilize it for, you know, events, but they wanted to put valley parking there, so they came in front of this board to get some type, to get it in order to put valley parking there. I think you just need to work with your, with your neighbors and to see if you can work something out to utilize that parking and to come back with some type of... work something out to utilize that parking and to come back with some type of plan for, for parking. That would be my thought.
I, I would like to say one thing, we have had many meetings with the city and with Councilman Barlow's office and with Betsy Fretwell, and the things that came up in those meetings, there was this big parcel to the, to the east that was vacant, was a city-owned parcel, and we were trying to buy a portion of that specifically for parking. That didn't work out, they were in an existing contract with somebody else, but what the city did say is they, they would try to vacate the shoulder on their side of the street and make that parking, and then vacate, the other side of the street is owned by Indot, the, the shoulder on that side, and make that available for, they were going to try to make that available for parking also. And then the tenant on the west, or the, the person on the east side that did buy the parcel, part of their purchase agreement was specifically to try to have a joint parking space. So, we have all these things that we are working on, there's a lot of variables, but they obviously were supportive of the project if they're even talking about trying to do a joint parking space.
Right, and I, I understand that, and we are recommending board to the city council if it is denied, I don't think it's a final action. Mr. Tom? Mr. Director?
This item will be final action tonight.
Okay, well, it is final action. I, I, I just don't see how I can wrap my hands around approving a banquet facility without having some type of parking agreement in place. I understand you've tried to do that, I don't know what these situations were, but the way it stands now, I can't support it if there's no, if there's no indication of where you're going to park. And, and, and the, and the, and the property owners could come back and say, "Hey, I don't want you parking on my facility at any given point."
But, but there, let me clarify, there is, there is places to park. On, on Grand Central Parkway, if you go over there during the day, Nevada Ready-Mix parks all along that street.
Yeah.
There's, there's parking there, there's parking all up and down on the shoulder of the street, existing, so, again, there, there is parking, and, and again, we expect, you know, part of that to be buses and things like that, so, you know, we, there is, there is parking.
So, if, if I may through you, Mr. Chairman-
Go ahead.
So, what if you have a handicap guest, somebody in a wheelchair, in a van, in a ramp, where, are you going to say, "Go park on the street," or?
No, we have a specific handicap spot in, in the courtyard.
One?
Yeah.
Okay, I cannot support this project.
Yep. Well, we'll, I guess we'll look for a motion, but, I mean, I really don't have any serious heartburn over this, considering the location where it's at. I've been there before, it's been four years, but it doesn't look like anything's changed, and I don't see the difference in between, you know, a First Friday with a couple hundred people here, or a banquet facility with, you know-
And let me-
What's your occupancy?
Actually, yeah, let me actually have the occupancy, because that's a very important issue, that we would never have an occupancy over 300 people, we're, we're anticipating maybe like 250 at the very max, something like that, so this is not a high occupancy type venue.
Our, our code required parking on this is stated in the documents, is 36, and it's a 900 and, 940-foot length of road without going around the corner like Nevada Ready-Mix does.
I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Thank you. I would be willing to make a motion to support the request with one additional condition, and that would be, be subject to a one-year review of the parking issue, and it would be administrative review and just come back and see what kind of problems we're having with it. If there's no problems, I would have no problem lifting that restriction at the end of the year.
I'm fully supportive of that, that's fine.
Okay, well, then I would, I would make the motion in regards to variance 64481, recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions, with the additional conditions that the parking issue be addressed with a one-year administrative review.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of the approval of a variance, once the variance is approved, that deviation from the code is approved, the required review, even if there was an issue, they've already been approved, the deviation, there's no refocation of the variance.
How can we get that issue addressed then?
There's just the, just the issue before, so I guess it's either up or down on the, on the request.
Do we still have a motion? Are you thinking about it? We've got a couple lawyers here, don't we?
What was the question?
Then I think we're just going to have to let nature take its course. I would make a recommendation for approval as submitted, and the reason I'm willing to make that recommendation is because if parking becomes an issue, the business will fail. How's that? It's either going to work or not work with or without the parking, so we'll give them a good fair shot to make it work with approval of their request and understanding that, like I said, I wish you the best.
Thank you.
I hope the parking turns out to be no issue, so that's my motion.
That motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
In regards to, in regards to variance 64650, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, items 1551 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 52, 52, VAR 64031, applicant owner, Naville C. Emmerton and Julia E. Moore, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a three-foot rear yard setback and a five-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required for an existing 160-square-foot accessory structure, class two, in, at 7521 Cedar Gulf Avenue, Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds a requested variance to be a self-imposed hardship as the pool equipment shed was built without confirmation of the current code requirements for building setbacks of an accessory structure. Staff finds no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance and is recommending denial of the application. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm Julia Moore, 7521 Cedar Gulf Avenue. I'd like to submit for the record, a support from our neighbor directly to the east of us, thank you very much. We are the original owners of this home that was built in 1998. About 2003, we installed our pool. At that time, the variances for the, for a setback from your walls was five feet side and, and rear wall. Our equipment is located in the southeast corner of our property, our whole property, the backyard's situated to the, to the south, so it gets a lot of sun. About a little over 10 years after we built the pool, we realized that the sun was beating up our pool equipment, the filters, the heaters, the, the piping that feeds the, all the, the equipment, and my husband did a little bit of research and found out that was, that a building less than 200 square feet could be built up around the equipment, and that's what we did. And then all of a sudden, we started receiving, what we, an anonymous letter was sent to the city, and then we started receiving letters from the city and filed the application and did all that, submitted the, the monies required. At this point, I'm ready for questions.
Thank you. This is public hearing, anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action. No discussion, can I get a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion on variance 64031 for approval this evening. And following staff's conditions, thank you.
Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. Motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Congratulations. Moving on to item, item 53, VAR 64304, owner applicant Charles Ridge Benyon, Sr., and Tiffany Lynn Densley, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a four-foot side yard setback for an existing two-story addition where five feet is required at 4900 Sun Bright Avenue, Ward Five. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds a requested variance to be a self-imposed hardship as construction on the room addition was started without a building permit. Staff finds no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance and is recommending denial of the application. Please note an additional letter of support has been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record?
Charles Benyon, 4900 Sun Bright, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130.
Thank you, go ahead.
So, we've lived in this house for 18 years, I have six children, and we've all lived there, and I've got a few of my children here today with my wife. We, we've talked to our neighbors about this prior to doing any, any building on it, they were all in approval. Our next-door neighbor right next to us, Roy Hollinger, included in the documents that we submitted was a statement by neighbors that they, they approved this, they don't have any problem with the construction or the four-feet setback instead of the five-feet. They include our next-door neighbor on the side where the addition is being built, the addition is, is for storage. We used to have two storage sheds right there, ran a little junkie over time, and so we looked to replace them, and this was, this was our solution to it, to allow for storage. The next-door neighbor right next to it, Roy and Janet Hollinger, have lived, have lived next door to us for 16 years, and Roy and Janet are signatures on this. Next to them is Dave and Lori Meter, who have lived in their home for 20 years, they also have no problem with this, as a matter of fact, nobody has any problem with it on our entire street. We got everybody that is, lives in, on our street, signed this document. The only ones that aren't signatories on it are rental homes where the owners live in Alaska and Florida, so we request approval on this.
Thank you. This is public hearing, anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you through you. I had an opportunity to visit the property and actually speak with Mr. Hollinger, who's the neighbor, and I don't see any, any problems with this, it's going to be a nice addition to his home, and I'd like to make a motion to approve item 53, VAR 64304.
Before we vote, I, I do have one question.
Okay.
So, I see that you're already constructing, no building permits.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was my mistake, and we, we remedied that, of course, we, we have all the plans ready, as a matter of fact, and I'm, I'm happy to do the conditions that have been mentioned by the, the conditions are, it's something that we hadn't discussed before with the, when I did my pre-application conference, but they, I'm happy to do what they asked, putting in access from inside the house on the first level, we're, we're happy to do that, we'll make an adjustment. We already have the plans ready, all the different, I think we've got five or six sets of plans, we're ready to submit those this week if we get approval, and we will now adjust those to allow for the, for the ingress from the house on the first floor.
Okay. All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 54, VAR 64311, applicant owner PN2 Inc., for possible action on a request for a variance to allow the street name reverence to coexist with the existing street name reference, where street names that sound alike cannot be used at the north, northwest corner of Clark County, 215 and Lake Mead Boulevard, Ward Four. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the city's street naming and address assignment regulations document requires that names that are the same, or pronounced the same, or similarly with different spellings be used only once. Staff, including fire communications, objects to the use of the street name reverence as it sounds too similar to reference. The distinction between names that sound alike is important in emergency situations where the street name must be cleared to dispatchers. As there's no unique circumstance for the site that creates a hardship, staff recommends denial of the variance, and staff notes that this item should be corrected to read Ward Four, not Ward Two, and I believe you actually did say Ward Four. Did you not? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Wesley Petty, my address is 1555 South Rainbow, I'm here on behalf of Polty Homes. The street reference is in the city of Henderson, it's on an industrial park with four buildings addressed off it, off it. Our proposed reference parkway will have no building addresses, and so there, the only, there wouldn't be any address or any destination for an emergency vehicle with the reverence being in, in a distress call, so I can answer any questions you have.
So, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard, come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if it's my understanding that that development is called reverence, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't see any problem with this, I mean, I know the words are somewhat similar, one's in Henderson, one's up in the northwest area. Second thing, if we're going to be consistent, we've probably got six different streets called Harmon, we probably have two different streets called Lake Mead, we have several streets called Durango, I don't even know the logic behind Ford Apache and Rampart and Ford Apache and the like, so to stay consistent with the city's plan of naming streets, I'm fully in support of this.
Great. Yeah, I didn't realize that whenever I was reading this, it, reference was in Henderson, reference was here in the city, so I thought you were trying to connect them in the same community and-
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
Thank you. Item number 54, which is VAR 64311, move to approve, I don't think there's conditions, but there are, subject to staff's conditions.
That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless it appeals to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Moving on, item 55, VAR 64454, applicant owner Vicente San Juan, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required for an existing 589-square-foot single-family dwelling addition and to allow an existing 276-square-foot accessory structure, class two carport at three feet from the primary structure where six feet is required, a two-foot side yard setback where three feet is required, a 15-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required, and to be located in the front yard where such is not allowed at 1029 North Tonopah Drive, Ward Five. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting this variance as a result of a code enforcement action regarding existing unpermitted structures, including a freestanding carport in the front yard and an addition to the house in the rear yard. The variance includes encroachments into the front, side, and rear yard setback areas as well as a reduction of the minimum separation distance required between an accessory structure and the main residence. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstances, circumstance has been presented to justify the request, and staff is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is Esteban Argüera, and I am a friend of the family, and I helped out to prepare some information to go ahead and proceed with the application- as well as a reduction of the minimum separation distance required between an accessory structure and the main residence. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to justify the request and staff is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you, can we get your name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is Esteban Argüera and I am a friend of the family and I helped out to prepare some information to go ahead and proceed with the application for the waiver of development standards for the variance. What we have is several points that should be looked at. All of the construction was existing, so this is some sort of a legacy or inherited problem. And there were several, before we went over into the planning or zoning department, we went through to check all of the requirements that we would be needing through the building department and lots and lots of, well, some changes are going to be done, like part of the roof is going to be rebuilt so we can get higher and better slope roof. Obviously, we're going to be needing to increase or upgrade the fire rating on the walls that are too close to the property lines. All of the non-compliance walls or areas where they are not in compliance with the setback that there is required. There is a patio in the back of the house that was as well built before the owner came into the scene and bought the property, that is going to be demolished. Then we have letters from the neighbors all agreeing on what we're doing and the permit that we're pulling through just because the owner wants to have everything according to code and everything as much as we could. And finally, what we have is basically a room addition in the back of the house, which is like ten feet away from the rear property line instead of fifteen, which is what is required by the building department and zoning. And then on the carport, we have a two-hundred-and-seventy-something square feet for carport, which is three feet away from the main house or the main building instead of six feet, which is required. And then we are three feet and like almost forty inches from the property line on the side where we should be having three feet. But then they are measuring the distance to the edge or the eave of the carport. Then again, that would be something that we can fix because it's just a matter of like cutting up the eave so we could have three feet and four inches to the property line. The main thing about the carport, besides the fact that it's in the front area, is that we should be having twenty feet in the front, but we have fifteen-six, fifteen feet and six inches, well, about fifteen feet. Then again, all of this was existing when we bought the property. We have, well, the owner and the bank and everything was, they went through a series of reports or inspection from the bank, from the realtor, the buyer, the seller, and so on and nobody like came out and said, hey, you know what, this is not permitted and so on. So the owner started to get letters from the building department and obviously he took hands into the thing to try to resolve and fix as much as he could and that's the situation where we're right now. So we're in the best of the attitudes to try to fix the problem. Obviously, the buildings are existing, they were existing before buying the property, but we're trying to comply with as much as we can so we can get everything resolved. And once again, we have the letters from the neighbors, everybody agreeing. We only have neighbors in the sites because in the front what we have is a school from the Clark County School Department District. And we think having the carport in the front should be like a constraint or like a problem for that. But once again, we're just putting it down there, on the board just to see if there is any way that we can take care of the setbacks and do as much. Because usually what we have, when we're too close to the property lines, what we requested, if we get the permit approved, I mean, if we get the variance approved, is just to make sure that we have, we upgrade the fire rating on the wall so we make sure that there is no, we reduce the possibility of a fire between property, one property and the other one. So once again, we are, this is our situation and we're just trying to, as much as we can, do whatever we need to do so we can get this thing approved if possible.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, anyone wanting to be heard, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the commissioners for further discussion. Mr. Chair? Yes, Commissioner Kerr.
Thank you through you, so are you saying that when you bought the house, it already had the carport there? And the backyard, what was in the backyard?
There is an addition in the back, which is for like new family room, increased areas for closets and so on.
And it's already there?
Everything was already there.
When you purchased it, so it went through closing and it went through everything?
Just inspections from the bank, inspection from the seller, realtor, the selling realtor, and inspection from the buyer, realtor. Everybody inspected that and it still went through under the radar until anyone got it.
That's tough, I don't know...
And once again, he's in the best of, I just to fix whatever we need to do.
I like to hear from my peers who might have a little more experience in this because it seems like it's in a tough situation.
Mr. Chairman, y'all moved in in June of two thousand and eleven, somewhere around there? And when you moved in, as you said, those structures were already there?
Everything was existing, yes.
I think I'm going to support your application.
There's one more thing, is that once we get this approved and we go through the building department, I need you guys to understand that there will be a good amount of money to be put into the house because once again, like one-third, maybe one-fourth of the house, we're going to do like redo the roof to go in accordance with the building department requirements they're going to be asking. So we're trying to put as much as we can to get to the codes.
Commissioner Trowbridge.
Well, I don't have the picture in front of me, but you showed a picture that showed the carport with one vehicle there, if you could get back to that again, the picture.
No, we only have the same drafting drawing that you have in...
That one, write that picture right there. This is probably as good as it's going to look, you know, and I think that what we got, what we have here is a code enforcement officer making an observation. And what probably attracted his attention more than the two-foot versus three-foot or the fifteen-foot versus the twenty-foot is the items that look like they belong in an enclosed garage. Certainly in my enclosed garage, I have junk like that. But it's not in a carport where everybody that's across the street has to look at it constantly. So I think that your lack of maintenance in your carport area is what started this thing. And you might serve yourself well if that area was to be cleaned up and kept cleaned up.
And we totally agree with that and that is going to happen in two days, tops.
I'll support your motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion on item fifty-five, VAR six-four-four-five-four, for approval.
And Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say with any staff conditions that apply.
And Commissioner Kerr, if I could ask you if you'd be, or consider modifying your motion to add to condition number two that says all necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspections shall be completed in compliance with Title Nineteen and all codes as required by the Building Department of Building Safety. The part that I'd like to add is final inspections must be completed within, let's say, six months.
Okay, I will accept that, finally amended, thank you.
And do y'all agree to that?
Absolutely, once we get the permits approved and everything, inspection is going to go through right away.
Okay, thank you. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office in ten days.
Item number fifty-six, VAR six-four-four-six-six, applicant owner Ten Fifteen Hundred Edge LLC for a possible action on a request for a variance to allow a sixty-foot tall freestanding sign where forty feet is maximum allowed and to allow a one-thousand-and-thirty-two square foot sign, or square feet of signage area where eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet is the maximum allowed at the southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Maryland Parkway, Ward three. Staff recommends denial, staff report please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to replace an existing forty-foot tall freestanding sign with a new sixty-foot tall double-sided freestanding sign at the Hundred Shopping Center. This project would replace the westernmost freestanding sign on the Charleston Boulevard frontage. The deviation in size from the zoning code requirement is fifteen percent and the deviation in height is fifty percent. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance pertaining to the property has been presented that would warrant the increase in sign height and size over what Title Nineteen allows, staff recommends denial. And note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication, thank you.
Yes, may we get your name and address for the record?
Sure, good evening, members of the planning commission, my name is Jay Dapper and I'm the owner of the shopping center at the corner of Charleston and Maryland Parkway. And in the last six to eight months, I've purchased the Hundred Shopping Center, the corner of Maryland Parkway and Bonneville, which is the former Mahoney's Drum Shop, and then the building at six-thirty South Eleventh Street, which at once was the Gambler's Bookstore. And I am working on plans to renovate and kind of rejuvenate this corner. And when I purchased the Hundred Shopping Center, I started off by demoing the former Farm Basket Building, which was way past its life expectancy and had homeless people hanging out front and, you know, we planned to, at some point, build a new building there, but the item before you tonight is for a new sign that we would like to construct at the shopping center. The sign is of vintage aesthetic that we hope will complement not only the Googie architecture of the shopping center, but overall be kind of an iconic sign on this particular intersection, which we happen to be directly across the street from the Hundred Theater, which a lot of people here in this valley love. The sign, as you can see, looks a little bit different than your standard sign and we tried really hard to kind of complement and embrace the old fifties, sixties vintage aesthetic when we designed this sign. And I believe there's two waivers in front of you tonight, one is for the height and one is for the area of the sign that we currently have. I'd first like to start off by saying, the sign height, originally when we designed it, we were trying to stay right at fifty feet, which if this parcel was just a little bit larger, a multi-tenant sign like this would be allowed under code to be fifty feet. The top of the sign, as you can see, I don't know if you can see on your overhead, is about eight feet tall, so close to ten feet. And that's just this portion of the sign here. And really, that's mainly for aesthetic purposes only, I mean, it's not really, you know, the main part of the sign. And then the remainder of the sign, as far as the size goes, as you can see, we've got a tenant panel for each of the existing tenants in the center and then some potential tenants that will come down, hopefully come down the pipe when we build this last building where the former Farm Basket is. And I've brought two representatives from YESCO here tonight and they're just here to speak about kind of the design and what we plan to do and the quality of this particular project.
Thank you.
Gary Bunker, fifty-one nineteen South Cameron, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-one-eight. This project is in the Founder's District and I think it complements that district in the fact that it is, it is a fifties, sixties district. I grew up in this area and I know the area. I think the sign will work well with the architecture that the building's going to be patterned after and we're requesting approval as presented.
Thank you.
Ed Stagner, fifty-one nineteen South Cameron with YESCO, just here to answer any questions, design of it. Like I say, the eight-foot on the top, we didn't have it on there originally and it just looked a little odd without that extra eight-foot.
Okay, thank you. This was no discuss in public hearing, anyone wanting to be heard, please come to the podium. Seeing none, oh, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Jeff Seifert, twenty-two-one Ballard Drive. And I just want to say, this is exactly what we want to see in our neighborhood. It's awesome, it's a beautiful sign and, yeah, this is awesome, this is where we want to see the neighborhood going. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come on down. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for further discussion, Commissioner Cherry.
Through the chair, I think the applicant's brought a wonderful sign that complements the neighborhood and he's paid a lot of attention to what's happening there. If there isn't any discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please, please do.
Make a motion for approval on VAR six-four-four-six-six.
That was a motion for approval?
For approval, yes.
Subject?
Subject to conditions, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office in ten days.
Thank you.
Moving on to relating to items fifty-seven, fifty-eight. Item fifty-seven, SUP six-four-four-three-zero, applicant Charter Schools Development Corporation, owner CKWY Vegas LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed public or private school primary use at nine-hundred North Lamb Boulevard, Ward three. Staff recommends denial. Item number fifty-eight, SDR six-four-four-three-one, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for conversion of an existing forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty square foot shopping center to a public or private school primary use at nine-hundred North Lamb Boulevard, Ward three. Staff recommends denial, staff report please.
Mr. Chairman, staff has had a number of concerns related to the effect that this project might have on traffic and circulation in and around the site. These issues include the fact that the proposed primary school use would be located on the corner of two one-hundred-foot primary arterials with existing median islands. Access to the site would be right in and right out only. Reduction in speed along two primary arterials associated with installation of school flashers and the impact of those who park in the adjacent neighborhoods to pick up and drop off students rather than circulate through the site using the designated queue. Staff is also concerned about the proposed circulation plan through the site as parallel stacking of vehicles would block access to parking stalls. Public Works has placed an if-approved condition on the SUP, limiting the number of students to two-hundred to facilitate adequate onsite circulation for drop-off and pickup. We would like to amend this condition and add a new planning condition for a required review. If this is acceptable to the applicant, staff's reasons for recommending denial would no longer be a concern. So I would like to read into the record these two conditions. First, the planning condition number one, or this will be an added condition to the SUP six-four-four-three-zero. This special use permit shall be reviewed at a city council meeting in March twenty-eighteen, at which time the city council may require the school use to be removed or approve the addition of another one-hundred-and-fifty students for the two thousand and eighteen school year. The applicant shall be responsible for notification costs of the review. Failure to pay the city for these costs may result in a requirement that the use be removed. The required review should be conducted in conjunction with city's traffic engineer's evaluation of the onsite circulation as well as secondary impacts to the adjacent roadway network and surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. Subsequent annual reviews will be necessary to add any additional students. And then we would like to amend condition number seven of the SUP six-four-four-three-zero to read, the number of students for this site is limited to a maximum of one-hundred-and-fifty students unless a required review increasing the number of students allowed is approved. In no case shall the number of students exceed five-hundred-and-eighty-six. And note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name's Bob Gronauer, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant in this matter. If I could get your attention to the overhead, please, I'll show you our site plan. As you can see here, we have Washington, which is located to the south of us and to the east of us here is Lamb Boulevard. If you're familiar with this area here, this is essentially a depressed shopping center where majority of the site is already vacant. We do have a couple of small businesses... We do have a couple of small businesses that are located here. They're on a month-to-month tenant leases. However, if the school's approved and it's going to be built here, the, these businesses will no longer be in this area here. What we believe is, is that this school is actually a perfect location with respect to what we're proposing here for a charter school. A matter of fact, the applicants went out and had a neighborhood meeting recently, and in that neighborhood meeting, we had over 80 people overwhelmingly in support of the application to bring a charter school into this area. If you're familiar with this area, it's overcrowded in a lot of the schools, and are underperforming in a lot of the schools here. This is one of the reasons why we chose the location of, of what we're proposing here today. We appreciate staff's added conditions here that we were working on since this afternoon and as late as, as this evening to change recommendation from a denial to an approval with those added conditions. Those added conditions that Steve has mentioned are acceptable to us. In essence, is what that does here with the site itself, there's been some concern about the circulation on the site as students come, excuse me, as the parents drive their cars onto the site here. As I'm showing you, the queue line that we would be having on the school itself, where it comes out over here on the drop-up and pickup areas located here. Essentially, what the conditions say is, we're going to be approved for 150 students for our first year of operation. We're going to come back for a review with you as we work with your Public Works, city traffic engineer, and your planning staff to review those circulated, those circulation impacts with the surrounding area. We're more than comfortable that we're going to be moving on as we move on with each phase. So you'll see us again as we open up the school, come in for the review, and have a further discussion on this matter. So we appreciate staff's ability and, and recognizing that we could come to some solution here to make sure that we can have a school in this location. It's definitely needed. We did have some neighbors that were here earlier tonight. A matter of fact, one of the gentlemen who came up here to speak on public comment had to leave. He was in support of the application. I know we have about five other people that left, but however, they have letters in support also of the application itself. It's very important for the community to have an asset like this in their community. And more importantly, we're cleaning up an area here that otherwise would have just a vacant shopping center in this area. So with that being said, I can answer any questions. I'm sure there may be people here to speak in support. But once again, we appreciate your staff, the planning staff and Public Works with their revised conditions and recommendation for approval.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone that wants to be heard, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Allison Seraphin, 5392 Candle Spice Way. I am the founder and president of Opportunity 180, and I am here today in support of Agenda Item 57, which would transform 900 North Lamb into a high-quality, public, tuition-free charter school. Opportunity 180 launched in 2015 to transform the lives and futures of Clark County students by providing them with equitable access to the best possible education. Our name represents our vision, to bring transformational 180-degree change to support students and families in our community. We know that every student has the ability to succeed, and we work relentlessly to create the conditions that provide students with schools that set them up for success. This past April, we were recently named Nevada's Harbor Master in partnership with the Governor's Office and the Department of Education to advance the work of Senate Bill 491. And we have a responsibility, and now we are contractually obligated, to launch and support high-quality public charter schools focused on serving our kiddos in low-income communities. Las Vegas is a city grounded in entrepreneurial spirit and a vision in leading the way, and this initiative is no different. Similar to how visionaries turned our desert valley into an economic engine that we often know as Las Vegas Boulevard, we see the unlimited potential in vacant commercial buildings to become places of promise and opportunity that will ultimately offer our children a better chance in life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve McCracken, 300 South Fourth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Steve McCracken. I'm a 13-year resident of Las Vegas and a board member of Opportunity 180. I'm here tonight on behalf of our Board of Directors to support Agenda Item 57 to transform 900 North Lamb into a tuition-free public charter school. As a father, I believe every child deserves a high-quality education regardless of where they grow up. But in certain parts of our city, ZIP codes determine the quality of public schools that children can attend. It's not, it's not right that my daughter has access to a five-star neighborhood school, but if we lived on the other side of the county, just 20 minutes away, she would have, only have access to a one or two stars, one or two-star school. I think we can all agree that a child's future shouldn't be determined by the neighborhood that they live in. Every elementary school within two miles of 900 North Lamb is over-enrolled by at least 20%, and has, on average, more than 750 students. By providing families with an additional, high-quality neighborhood public elementary school, children will experience academic success, and our districts, district schools will experience enrollment relief. In addition, families will have the opportunity to participate in the democratic process of choosing a school for their child instead of being forced based on their ZIP code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ignacio Prado. I live at 2111 Sea Lion Drive. I am the lead founder and proposed executive director of Futuro Academy, a K-8 charter school that is proposed to serve the students of East Las Vegas, starting in 2017 with grades kindergarten and first grade. I don't want to be duplicitous in what, in what's been said. I do want to echo those comments, and in addition, mention that throughout the last year, I've been engaged in a fellowship to learn the operations of launching a charter school and running a charter school. Will be receiving support from an organization called Building Excellent Schools, which has helped launch over 100 charter schools across 22 American cities. This has been a significant investment on their part, about a quarter of a million dollars, mostly in travel so that I may see the operations of several successful charter schools in many different settings, most of which have included repurposed space. And the very first place that we began, every time that we visit a school, the crack of dawn at 6:30 in the morning is, how does arrival work? How does dismissal work? Those two systems, although a brief, a brief part of the day, are the highest, of course, incidence for horrible things to occur if we don't have a tight-running operation, where we have all the eyeballs on all the kids and a bunch of feet outside, making sure that things go right. So, that being said, I have seen several locations similar to the one that we are proposing to use, which they're in tight quarters. One comes to mind. I visited a school in Los Angeles in the Pico Union neighborhood, downtown Los Angeles. The school that we visited was Zekitas Academy, located on Pico and Union, for which the neighborhood is actually named, and is two of the main streets in that neighborhood. They did have several staff members outside running a practically valet service to make sure that kids were getting out of the car, they had an adult hand on them, walked into the building, and that the cars were moving efficiently. And within 15 minutes, hundreds of children were indoor at a K-4 school. So I believe this is possible. I welcome the, the process of review to show that it is possible to repurpose the space. And in my mind, having taught here in East Las Vegas for the last five years, just a little bit south on Lamb at Moore Elementary and at Long right around the corner, I know that I want this building not to be the blight in an eyesore that shows the exceptional difficulty that we faced during the recession, but rather the exceptional things that our kids are capable of moving forward. And I think I would be a fool to deny that there will be more traffic if we open a school. I do believe it's manageable through exceptional systems, and I'm, I'm up to the task as the possible first tenant at this space.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the Planning Commission for further, for further discussion. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. I've had the pleasure to meet with Ms. Seraphin and discuss the, what they want to do, not only just with this particular location, but the entire impact they want to make on the community. I think they're doing fabulous things, and I look forward to supporting them as best as I can. I've also had the pleasure to meet with Mr. Prado on a separate occasion, and what he wants to do with Futuro, and the institutions that, that he has behind him, Building Excellence in Schools, I think is going to make another positive impact in our community. So I applaud you guys, and I look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments. I'll be... I'd like to make a motion. One question. You're starting the first year. How many students?
150.
150. And then you'll go up each year?
The, yes, the business plan is 150 each year until we get to the max capacity, which was 586.
And that'll be reviewed by traffic or...
Reviewed by City Council and traffic and, and planning.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve of Gen. Item 57, SUP 64430.
Subject to staff's conditions?
Subject to staff conditions.
And the added conditions by, by staff?
Yes.
And you're...
That would be included in staff conditions, correct?
Yeah, we confirm, yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve of Gen. Item 58, SDR 64431, with any staff conditions.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will be heard at the city council meeting on July 20.
Thank you.
Item number 59, SUP 64351, applicant SouthwestCo Wireless LP DBA Verizon Wireless, owner Tonopah Partners LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed 77-foot-tall cellular communications facility at 2100 West Charleston Boulevard, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to construct a new wireless tower in the Las Vegas Medical District. Within this district, cellular communications facilities are conditional use, with a condition that they are permitted only if incorporated into another structure and of stealth design such, such that they are not discernible. Towers are prohibited as a conditional use, so the special use permit is required. Although it is of stealth design, it would be the first standalone tower in the district. Staff is recommending denial of the requests, as it does not meet the requirements of the conditional use or the intent of the district. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Applicant, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Tracy Klein with Spectrum Services, 4850 West Oquendo Road in Las Vegas. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to begin by thanking Councilwoman Tarkanian and her office. They've been very, very helpful to us over the last two years. We've been working on a site in this area, and Mr. Perrigo and his staff, who although they don't support the project, have been very helpful to us as well, and to the Las Vegas Medical District Board, who've been generous enough to allow us to incorporate their logo for, for the medical district into the design. Mr. Chairman, for the sake of time, I'm going to skip the background of why Verizon needs this, and why we, the other locations we worked on, and how we ended up here. I'm happy to discuss all of that, or any part of it, if you'd like for me to. I have before you on the overhead an aerial of the parcel. This is the CVS Pharmacy that you probably know well. That's at the corner of Tonopah and Charleston. This, this building here is a part of the UMC campus. The site is proposed at the back of the CVS building. This is what the back of the building looks like. The wall that would, it would actually be located here, the shrubbery and plant material would be removed and, and either replaced or, or replaced in a perimeter around the enclosure here. The enclosure wall would match the existing building materials and color. We are not deleting any of the parking that you see there. Mr. Chairman, this is the design of the tower. It may look familiar to you from my last appearance before this commission back a few months ago with a project at Alta and Decatur. It differs slightly in that this is a single leg instead of three. We did that to conserve space so we wouldn't delete any parking. And the panels that would conceal the wireless equipment would bear the Las Vegas Medical District logo. Mr. Chairman, staff's position that the medical district plan doesn't support this, I do think that, that a contrary conclusion can be drawn. Goal number one of the plan is that the district develop into a regional major medical district. I don't think you can do that without having excellent wireless coverage. I think just in the normal, in the normal setting, that patients and their families and medical personnel need to be able to use their wireless devices. And, and for a reason that in almost 20 years of appearing before zoning hearings, zoning boards, that I've never used, because I don't think it's principled, but I do think it's fair in this case, is in emergency situations. The UMC Medical Trauma Center is there, and in the event of, of something we don't like to think about, these wireless networks are absolutely critical and would be critical The second goal is to achieve high-quality, people-oriented development in the area. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that the design here is a high-quality one. We're not asking the commission to, to grant us variances from any, any of the development standards that normally apply. And goal four is to maintain a balance in the land uses and respect existing land uses. And I think this design does that as well. The staff report mentions that we're 250 feet from the nearest residentially zoned parcel. That's a vacant parcel on Charleston that I don't think anybody expects to develop into residential. We're actually 750 feet away from the nearest residential parcel. I, I think it's going to blend in nicely, and, and with what's going on in the medical district, the logo is going to be quite stunning. And, and I think it's to achieve what we need to do here, it strikes a nice balance. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the Planning Commission for discussion.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for designing such a, a great sign to house the cellular tower, to invite people, and to acknowledge to people where this medical area is going to be. It's really an outstanding addition to our neighborhood. So if nobody else has anything to say, I'm ready to make a motion for approval.
Please do.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Looks like Commissioner.
Oh, I had it on. But, you know, since it is on, real quick, just FYI, you know, UNIV School of Medicine is also going to be taking up space during the near future with that Shadow Lane campus, so it's going to create a little bit more density there as well. So I think it is well needed. Thank you.
Thank you. So regarding item number 59, SUP 64351, my motion is for approval following all of staff's recommendations.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, this item, I'm sorry, you need to go first.
This, this, this item carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at city council on July 20.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number 60, SUP 64408. Hold on.
That's right.
Yep, okay. Item 60, SUP 64408, applicant Massage One, owner Monaco Properties LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,664-square-foot massage establishment with a waiver to allow a distance separation of 141 feet from a similar use... separation of one-hundred-and-forty-one feet from a similar use where a thousand feet is required, and a waiver to allow a distance separation of one-hundred-and-eight feet from a residential use where four-hundred feet is required at Six-Four-Four-Six, North Durango Drive, Suite One-Thirty, Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Can we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to open a massage establishment within an existing shopping center located within the Town Center master plan area. Waivers of the required distance separation from a similar use, as well as from a protected residential use, are required for the proposed location, and due to these waivers, staff cannot support the request and is recommending denial.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, public discussion is closed. Turn it over to the commission for discussion, possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move just to obey it to the July twelfth Plan and Commission meeting.
Motion's on the floor for abeyance till the July twelfth Plan and Commission hearing.
Moving on, motion carries. Moving on to item number sixty-one. Special use permit, Six-Four-Four-Three, applicant Compassionate Team of Las Vegas LLC, owner Two, Two Thousand Six, Robert Scott Carl Livin' Trust, for possible action on a medical, or a request for a special use permit for a proposed ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty square-foot medical marijuana cultivation facility at Twenty-Six-O-Three, Twenty-Six-O-Five, and Twenty-Six-O-Seven, Halton Drive, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to move a previously approved medical marijuana cultivation facility to a new location, which is adjacent to the previously approved site due to construction issues related to asbestos removal. The new site meets all zoning and distance separation requirements for the use and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding land uses, and staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Hello.
I'm Brian Hardy with the Law Firm of Mark Kierbach Coffing on behalf of the applicant. I also have with me the manager of the applicant, Paul Mashouf, is with me today. So this is a medical marijuana facility previously approved. We had to move exactly next door in order to be able to avoid an asbestos problem that we came upon when we were moving and trying to get ready to develop this project. We've worked very closely with Councilwoman Tarkanian to identify the location next door, and we've been able to identify it, get the building, and we're ready to proceed and move forward with our application and license.
Thank you. This was no dissent to public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Turn this over to Plan and Commission for discussion, if I could start. Can you list off the names of all your partners and the owners of this facility? Because I remember when we originally went through this, you know, there's a lot of the partners and owners, I mean, there's a list ten, ten deep, so I just want to make sure that there's no conflicts.
Absolutely. The principles of the company are Paul Mashouf, Danny Simon, and Mario Sanchez.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
If there's no discussion, I don't have a problem making the motion this evening for approval.
Please do.
Unless if anybody, okay. Following staff's recommendation, approving SUP Six-Four-Four-Three, following staff's recommendations.
And conditions?
And conditions, thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action, less appeal to the clerk's office in ten days.
Item number sixty-two, SUP Six-Four-Four-Five-A, applicant Platinum Management Group Two LLC, owner Farid Mohabian Fard et al., for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a beer-wine cooler off-sale establishment within a proposed two-thousand-seven-hundred square-foot general retail store, then listed at nineteen-fifty-eight East Charleston Boulevard, Ward Three, Coffin. Staff recommends approval.
Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the use will be located within a new convenience store in an existing retail center. The use meets distance separation requirements and all minimum use requirements. Site is parking impaired, but the addition of an ancillary off-sale establishment use does not add to the parking requirement. Staff therefore recommends approval, and note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodi Youssef. I reside at eighteen-twenty-nine Vicaro Place, Henderson, Nevada, eight-nine-zero-seven-four. I'd just like to give you guys some quick background about me. I recently turned twenty-four. I run and operate convenience stores and gas stations in Boulder City, Las Vegas, and the north Las Vegas area. My focus is essentially on locations that have either closed or been neglected. I have taken over such locations as the former Pat's Chinese Kitchen and turned that into a branded seventy-six. I've also recently acquired the former Quick Stop on Fremont and Twenty-First. So back in February, we were working on looking for another location to put a convenience store with thrifty ice cream like we have in all of our, most of our other locations, and we stumbled upon this, this lovely location. I then went through the proper channels and went to zoning and met with Mr. James Marshall. I was instructed to fill out a conditional use verification form, which I did. That form was signed and approved on the thirty-first of March. I then applied for business licensing after executing a lease and putting down, executing a ten-year lease and putting down a fourteen-thousand-dollar deposit. After my application was submitted to business licensing and my fees were paid to Minerva Gomez on the twenty-first, I was notified that the conditional use verification was actually issued wrongfully and that I would have to appear before you guys for a special use. I just want to let you guys know, I'm twenty-four years old. I have everything I have literally going into this project. If it goes bad, I'm on, I'm on hook for ten years if I don't get this verification. I have a ten-year personal, personal guarantee, and it'll wipe everything I have. I'm a member of the Five Points Business Association. We, I recently did a, did a presentation for the NPF for Hollingsworth Elementary. I've worked very closely with Captain Walsh and his precinct. Every location I've ever taken over, we've made, look aesthetically better, we've decreased crime, I've hired the homeless, I've hired people from halfway homes that live in the area. I just want to be a part of the community for a long time and do as much as I can do, and I hope that you guys believe in me and give me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. This was no dissent to public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Jeremy Storms, Seventeen Twenty-One East Oki Boulevard, I'm the Vice President of the Crestwood Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
Our neighborhood is one that's in transition. We've had a neighborhood association for about a year and a half now. Before that, no one had been, there'd been no voice for our neighborhood for about five years. And it's a neighborhood with historic roots that with the city's help, we have been improving. We refurbished a sign that had not, had been defaced since the nineteen-sixties recently. We've, within conjunction with the city, have been, have used the code enforcement to get rid of graffiti, squatters, houses that are problematic that we've been reporting on and getting squatters out of our neighborhood and these problem, these, these problem places resolved where there's houses, people moving into these houses. This is an historic neighborhood. We've got houses from the forties through the sixties with great representation of the architecture of that period there. So we're in transition and right, butting all of this other thing, all these other things that are going on in the downtown area of redeveloping it. And when it comes to our neighborhood, the storefronts, and particularly the storefronts that abut the alleyway that's north of our neighborhood, that this storefront would abut, have been problematic for us. The places that are convenience stores that sell alcohol have been problematic for us. There was a Seven-O-Two-O Mart on Fifteenth Street that in February of last year had spice, spice being sold into which they lost their license and shut down. The Maxi Mart that's on Charleston at Twenty-two Twelve is a, is a, is a hotspot in the neighborhood for crime. When you look at where crime occurs in our neighborhoods, they tend, it tends to be around where places that sell liquor are. That includes the CVS and Albertsons that's there in our neighborhood and these other places I've mentioned. And the bottom line is, is there is a proliferation of places that sell alcohol in our neighborhood that are convenience stores in our neighborhood. We've got, in the fifteen-hundred square feet that we, there was a part of this presentation, I counted six places that were convenience stores and six places that sold alcohol. So as far as the need, it, you know, from our perspective, it has, we have a lot of vendors satisfying that need. And that otherwise, you know, we have seen a correlation of transients that, that do go to these liquor stores, and this is from my own, my own experience going to these places and trying them out. And the people that I see there are not my neighbors, they are transients moving through the neighborhood. And they're, and we have had, in our neighborhood, violence from transients that is just, this whole plan is problematic for us. We have not had any communication with this gentleman as of yet. This was not something apparently was recommended before getting to these proceedings. But we had, you know, a double murder on Ballard that was people that don't live in the neighborhood this year. We also had a torture in a vacant house in our neighborhood on, on Oki that resulted in an arson. It was, again, transient people in the neighborhood. So we're concerned about, you know, these sorts of places, bringing in people that aren't in our community, to our community that cause us great concern.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Rappetti. I'm nineteen-eleven Ballard. What he's saying is not a lie. I've had several police call, you have to call police every night. Just last night, we had somebody drunk out in their car. I mean, and another person behind my house. That alleyway is constantly, like, bombarded by people. There's alcohol cans, bottles, all over the place. I mean, constant violence. You hear people in the morning, and it's due to alcohol. There's got to be a better resolution to these problems. You can't keep bringing more alcohol. I mean, there's a Dottie's, there's, the alleyway is a very small block. It's not even, it's like a half a block. There's, there's Ballard, there's Crestwood, and then, and then, and then, there's Dottie's right there. What he's proposing is, is, is a Dottie's, and then boom, right, right, the opposite side of that is, is this liquor, another liquor or alcohol store with more, more, more potential guns and violence. We deal with that at Maxi Mart daytime. Daytime, there's incidents with gun, gun violence. Just behind that, which is where I would be, just behind that is, is, man, there was a house that they, they regutted and gutted several times because of the Maxi Mart right there. I mean, what he says he put into that, what, what do we get when it's a whole community that we come together and we do these things? We were just in here the other day, and, and our, and our mayor couldn't make it, possibly the Homeland Security thing or something like that, I don't know. But she couldn't make it to our, our meeting. We had a float that we put in the Hell Dorado. We've been doing good things, and we're trying to bring up our community. We love the sign that that gentleman brought in for the Huntridge. This is not the same thing. This is, this is more of the bad. We want the good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, this is a beer-wine cooler on sale, not, not liquor? Not that that changes your mind or anything?
No.
Just I wanted to specify.
Thank you. Gambling and alcohol.
Anybody else?
And opposed for record.
My name's Ashley Lee. I am the current president for the Crestwood Neighborhood Association. I'm also a resident on Twenty-Twenty-One Ballard. And I also back up against the alley, and we've dealt with a lot of huge issues with the alley. Since I've moved in a year and a half ago, we've kicked a lot of people that have lived in that alley, also who have graffiti, defecated, just not what we want for sanitary reasons and just for our overall health and well-being of our community. So I want to oppose this just because there hasn't been any business owners on the opposite side of the alley that have proven to us that they've wanted to make this community better. And so until they make efforts to clean up the alleys, which have an exorbitant amount of rough, of rubbish and garbage and defecation, I'm just not willing for anything that has to do with beer, alcohol in our neighborhood.
Hello, Jeff Seifert, Twenty-Twenty-One Ballard Drive. Like what everybody says, that alley that backs into theirs is full of garbage. We call code enforcement all the time to have it cleaned up. There's two unlocked dumpsters back there that get emptied, garbage is everywhere. You know, our street on Ballard is a huge wa, you know, the, the, sorry, people use it to walk back and forth to avoid Charleston. It's a high-traffic area, and I just don't see a need. There's the AMPM there, we have Albertson, CVS, the Huntridge Pharmacy already sells ice cream. There's a huge ice cream store that caters to all the trucks and to people right next door, pretty much. And it's, we don't need the, you know, we don't need another place that sells alcohol. You know, we need places like the multi-use building that's going in downtown that we heard from earlier. We need, you know, the, the corner of Maryland and Charleston to be rebuilt. We want to see these things in our neighborhood. We don't want to see more convenience stores that sell alcohol and wine, and, you know, we want to build up the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone else wanting to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn, and turn this over to the plan.
I'm sorry, can I say one more thing?
There's been four approvals for it, and those are on Ranto Drive. That's like over five miles from the neighborhood, the Crestwood neighborhood. So I don't know how that affects, because, yeah, you know what I mean?
I don't understand what you're saying.
I live on Ranto Drive. I think there's, there was four, there was four votes approving it, and I think it was a, Jeremy Storms for the record, and I believe it was probably an owner who resides at that address that got a notice of the, of the, of the request. And so there was one person voting four times for four residents.
Oh, you're saying the, the approval card?
Correct.
The Mary Bartz's? I, I got you.
Correct.
You know, I'm gonna give you two minutes for rebuttal.
I would just like to state, as far as the alley and transits and stuff like that is, is concerned, I've actually worked very closely with Captain Walsh and his team and put up, put together events to make sure that these types of situations, when these crimes occur, that these, the community can, can better work with the police force to, to find out what happened. I've also worked with Karadad and Kathy Gibson in order, when it comes to homelessness, to people that are drunk, people that are loitering. That back alley is now going to be something that is going to be lighted, surveilled. I'm going to be responsible for the new trash, trash dumpsters. I'm going to have myself and the employees that are going to be checking that and making sure that none, none of their concerns, you know, none, none of these things will be, will be going on. I've worked very, very closely with Felipe Ortiz and Maria Norero and Councilman Coffin's office, and, and, you know, I was, I had no idea that there was any concerns. I've called every single day since, since I've applied, and I'd be more than willing to do anything I need to do to make sure that you guys are satisfied and the rest of the community. I want to be there for a long time, and that was the reason I signed a ten, ten-year lease and, and put my personal guarantee on it and everything I've worked for and my family's worked for. I don't want, I don't want any of these negative things to happen in every location that I have. Like I said, they're, they're either branded, or, or we work very, very closely with the entire community, we support schools, we, we volunteer. It's, it is what we do. And we've done that in Boulder City, in north Las Vegas, and in Las Vegas in the past.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this up to the commission for discussion.
Through the chair. I really appreciate the neighbors coming out and hear their concerns, but I, I really think we have a great operator here that's going to work with you and- But I, I really think we have a, a great operator here that's gonna work with you and, and, and help make your neighborhood better. I, I live probably a mile, maybe two miles to the west of this location and understand the concerns and issues in the neighborhood. And a lot of them start with operators that actually care or don't care. And I, I think we have an applicant that does. And I, I would like to see the applicant work with, have a meeting with, with the neighborhood so they can have some communication and understanding if this does get approved and moves on. And if there isn't any other discussion, I would like to make an approval or a motion, excuse me. Item number SUP six four four five eight, make a motion for approval.
Subject to all status conditions. The motion carries.
And through the chair, just if, again, the applicant, please reach out to your neighbors to have that meeting.
That is most definitely. I am under the impression from Councilman Coffin's office that this would be final action. Is that correct?
Just sit tight for a second.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
And I would, I would recommend that you work closely with those neighbors. I, I have been to a couple of the other places and that you have kept pretty clean. And maybe you can, I, I know a couple of the operators. Long St. Louis and Paradise where they actually had a little neighborhood program where they'd go out and pick up trash and, and help the cause. And if you could do that for these people, because.
We would love to join their, their, their coalition.
I, I never knew that there's so much, so active people on Ballard Street. So this is good, good to see.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number sixty-three, SUP six four four eight two, applicant Boulevard Medical LLC. Owner Floresta Inc. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed eleven thousand forty square foot medical marijuana cultivation facility with a waiver to allow the medical marijuana cultivation use under the same roof as another use at thirty seventy Sirius Avenue, Suite one oh three, Ward one. Staff recommends approval.
Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to move a previously approved medical marijuana cultivation facility to a new location. A waiver is required to allow the use to operate under the same roof as other non-medical marijuana-related uses. The property is owned and industrial, which is intended to provide for heavy manufacturing industries in locations where they will be compatible with and not adversely impact adjacent land uses. Since the uses in the industrial district are the most intense uses allowed by code, staff determined there would be no adverse impact in approving the waiver. The new site meets all zoning and distance separation requirements for the use and can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding land uses. And staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Hello.
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, nineteen thirty Bilt Center Circle, representing Boulevard Medical. And this is, this was previously approved, kind of in the location behind Circus Circus. And they were originally buying their building back at twenty-nine hundred Highland. And the negotiations for that sort of fell apart. So then they agreed to lease the building. And so they've been working on that and got their approval from the state. And then that fell apart. So then they've actually just been sort of sitting there waiting until the city changed their ordinance to allow you to move. And that occurred in April. And so that's, they've finally been able to relocate and this is their new location. So we would respectfully ask for your approval and we agree with all the conditions of staff.
And Ms. Stewart, could you give us the names of owners and partners on this particular?
Well, that is in transition, but the, the main person is Mark James. And I think there's a couple that have actually left. Neil Tomlinson was on it, but I, I asked them and I think they hadn't had any discussions with you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the plan commission for further discussion. Commissioner Quinn.
If nobody has any discussion, I did have a nice meeting with Ms. Stewart regarding these, this application and the relocation of it and why. So with that, I'd like to follow staff's recommendation this evening for approval on SUP six four four eight two with all conditions. And there you go.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at city council on July twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to number sixty-four.
Can I, can I read that into the record?
Oh, you didn't. Oh, sorry.
I did not read that one into the record. Let me just go ahead and read it. Sixty-four SUP six four four eight three. Applicant Boulevard Medical LLC, owner Floresta Inc. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed one thousand nine hundred and sixty square foot medical marijuana production facility with a waiver to allow the medical marijuana production use under the same roof as another use at thirty seventy Sirius Avenue, Suite one oh three, Ward one. Staff recommends approval. This is a separate application, so staff report or is it the same, same report?
Mr. Chairman, yes, this, this is a, the same location and a similar use, the same waivers requested. And for the same reasons, staff is recommending approval. And there are additional letters of protest on this one as well.
Thank you.
And I'm Lucy Stewart, the same representative. So, and it's, this is the production component. So again, we would agree with staff's conditions.
Okay, this was public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the plan commission. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. Regarding SUP six four four eight three, my motion is for approval following all of staff's recommendations and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion for approval. Please cast your vote. Please post.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at city council on July twentieth.
Thank you. Moving on, six, item sixty-five, SDR six four four six seven, applicant owner Buffalo Acquisition Partners LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development and plan review for a two hundred and thirty space parking lot on the north side of Trinity Peak Avenue, east of Buffalo Avenue, Buffalo Drive, Ward one. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to develop a two hundred and thirty space parking lot on undeveloped land located within the Las Vegas Technology Center. The staff recommend, the staff recommendation was incorrectly posted to the agenda on the city website as denial. However, the project is designed to meet all Title Nineteen Development Standards in full and is an appropriate use for the site. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dante Amato, architect for Incubus Studio. You're on behalf of this project.
What's the address?
And my address is two four one West Charleston, Suite one four five eight nine one zero two.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay, essentially this was presented for review and we had access into the parking lot, which is for the business across the street, for their employees. And we had it offset, as shown, to the west. And it was recommended that we bring it in line with the existing driveway across the way. And we've done so. Okay, and attempted to meet all the other requirements.
Okay, this is public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the plan commission for discussion.
Thank you. You do have adequate handicap parking with these two hundred and thirty spaces, right?
Yes, we do.
Two hundred and thirty spaces. Okay. With that in mind, I'm gonna follow staff's recommendation tonight for approval. And there you go. What's their conditions as well. Thank you.
This motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Item sixty-six, SDR six four four seven nine, applicant Opportunity Village, owner State of Nevada Division of Lands. For possible action on a request for a site development and plan review for a proposed twenty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot expansion of an existing social service provider, revised building elevations and other site amenities with a waiver to allow a four-foot perimeter landscape buffer along portions of the south property line where fifteen feet is required at six three zero zero West Oki Boulevard, Ward one. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the proposed enhancements to the development are compatible with the community college to the north, the fire station to the west, and also provide additional screening from existing single-family dwellings to the south. The onsite parking deficiency of two hundred and one spaces is proposed to be resolved through recordation of a private agreement with CSN and has been conditioned by staff. The waiver of landscaping requirements is warranted as the south perimeter buffer will be redesigned to provide additional trees and shrubs, and trees would also be added to the drop-off area. Staff therefore recommends approval. Note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, Director, Commissioners, good evening. Giovanni Petzi, two forty-one West Charleston Boulevard, representing the applicant Opportunity Village. If you're familiar, Opportunity Village is a nonprofit organization serving children and adults in Southern Nevada with intellectual disabilities. The Oki campus located adjacent to CSN is the oldest functioning campus, operating campus, and is, contains the Magical Forest and one of the largest revenue generators for that organization. The intent of the project is to add an addition of approximately twenty-two thousand square feet that connects the Wilson Building and the Lead Building on campus right now. And in the site improvements also include remodeling some of the existing parking on the Oki Fa, Oki frontage to include some promenade and some additional features that will complement the Magical Forest. We are, we are in agreement with staff's recommendations. The, the, one of the bigger items as well for the change on Oki is to create a more of a front door, a better face to Oki to, for the organization, which involves redoing some of the, the parking and the entry along Oki. So that also is a reason why we've had to reconfigure the parking. So there, in some cases, we have fifteen feet. In some cases where we have diagonal parking, we're down to four feet. And that's the, the waiver that's being requested at this time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. I'll turn this over to the plan commission for discussion, possible action. Can I get a motion?
Absolutely. I've loved to watch, watching Opportunity Village grow. I, when I was eighteen years old, I worked over there with Vince Triggs as a aide in one of his classrooms. So I'm very familiar with the, with the property in itself. So with that, I'm happy to make the motion for approval following all of staff's recommendations and conditions. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
SDR six four four seven nine, number sixty-six.
That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at city council on July twentieth, twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sixty-seven, SDR six four four eight four, applicant owner OmniNet thirty-three hundred Sahara LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed parking lot expansion and reconfiguration with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer to allow ten feet to the south and five feet to the east where fifteen feet is required at the northwest corner of Spanish Oaks Drive and Sahara Avenue, Ward one. Staff recommends denial.
Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed redevelopment of the subject site's parking field will precipitate the removal of mature landscaping while replacing it with inadequate landscape buffer depths and a lack of trees within the parking lot. Staff cannot support the proposed request and recommends denial of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Dante Amato, Architect, two four one West Charleston, eight nine one zero two. Good evening, all. We have a project here where we're trying to obviously beautify, rehabilitate this particular site. The reduction in parking, actually in landscape, is accomplished in order to be able to allow for a fire lane and double-loaded parking aisles. We've provided more ADA parking than is required. We have eight plus one handicap where there are five plus one handicap required. And the entire block, although that is not part of the obligation at this point, all of those buildings are going to be rehabilitated and beautified. And in, in essence, we're doing whatever we can along the property line to enhance the landscape. There are existing trees that exist on Sahara that are staggered and are shown on plan. And then we've got a second level of landscape behind that. So it creates a dense sort of screen to the parking area. We're just hoping that this makes a difference.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Anyone wanting to come up? Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the plan commission. Commissioner Quinn.
So I visit this bank frequently because it's my mom's bank. She's ninety-five years old. And first of all, there's always plenty of parking. And second of all, it's very difficult for me to make a decision to take out such beautiful, mature landscape when I know how long it's taken to grow and, and to look like that. So with this application, I'm going to follow staff's recommendation for denial subject to their conditions and suggestions. Thank you.
Did anyone else have anything to say?
SDR six four four eight four, sticking to the denial.
Okay, motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Just a reminder, a yes vote is for denial.
Thank you. I voted.
Please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
So I did it too. Reiterate, that's a denial.
That was a denial.
Okay, and do I get any sort of rebuttal opportunity at this point?
It's finished. You could go to the city's, the city clerk's office and file an appeal to city council within the next ten days.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh huh, thank you. Moving on to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within jurisdiction of the plan commission. No subject may be acted upon by the plan commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of time of, the amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time that any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Any commissioners? Seeing none. Maiden Jern.